Good morning. Welcome to the September 4th, 2024 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, a special meeting for budget. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisors Serna, Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 6th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The county of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made by during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. And thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, before we call the first item, I will remind everybody that when we go to public comments relating matters not on the agenda, which I assume there are some today, we will have two minutes per speaker, up to 30 minutes. Anyone who didn't have an opportunity to speak in that 30-minute period will carry it over after we have our timed items and action items and finish, and everybody will have ample time to be able to address the Board who would like to. We have done our best, with the clerk's staff has done their best, to order the speakers as was asked to do so. If we get that a little wrong, I apologize upfront, but we're going to do our best to get it all done and get it all in. And with that, please call the first item.
Our first speaker is Charles Stone.
My name is Charles Stone, District 4, Sioux Frost's district. I'm with the American Legion Post 637 in Citrus Heights, and I'm here to invite the Board and all members that are here to attend our annual Battle of the Bands and Barbecue. It is a fundraising event for veterans to help veterans in our community. As of today, one of our veterans is attending the Placer County Court for the Veteran Court. But it is an annual event that we raise money for.
To help veterans.
Veterans to help veterans. And I gave the Board some information about it. It is two weeks from now, September 14th. It is, like I said, the Battle of the Bands and Barbecue. We have three bands, six barbecue companies, and all you can eat and all you can drink for the day. We raise these funds to help veterans, whether they're in the court system or out of the court system, so they can get the best benefits. We're going to be honoring those who have served and recognizing those who have passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Supervisor Frost has plunged in. Reminder that, you know, we have a limited amount of time, so I appreciate your enthusiasm, but it does cut into speaker's times. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly say thank you, Commander Charles Stone of the American Legion Post 637, who is also known as our friendly neighborhood JAG attorney, travels the world and in his spare time does a lot in the community. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Amanda Benson. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Amanda Benson, Chief Public Defender, Sacramento County. I am here this morning to urge you to do all you can to bring closure to the current labor action involving my attorneys. I know you are all aware of the importance of the work the attorneys in my office perform. These dedicated public servants protect the rights of the accused and make the protections of our Constitution meaningful. Without them, the most vulnerable of the accused find themselves lost in the criminal justice system. What may not be as well-understood is how incredibly difficult this job is for the attorneys and their loved ones. Due to this strike, my executive team and I, four of us, have been going to court in place of our attorneys to handle hundreds of cases each day. This experience has served as a sharp reminder of how physically and emotionally challenging this work is. The courts we staff require the attorneys to spend hours on their feet, appearing on the court record, and running between courtrooms and conversations with various clients, judges, and opposing attorneys to reach just outcomes for our clients and the community. The work takes a tremendous emotional toll on our attorneys. During arraignments, our attorneys must speak to frightened and confused clients through jail cell bars and advocate for them to go home to their families. When the client is not released, it takes strength and resilience to stand up for the next client and try again and again. The work we have been doing is just a sliver of the duties and challenges our attorneys face every day. The stress my executive team and I have been experiencing this week does not approach the chronic stress our attorneys experience working with people day in and day out who have severe mental illness and substance use disorders and traumatic histories. It does not approach the stress that we experience of representing children who have suffered abuse and exploitation. And it does not compare to the overwhelming stress our attorneys experience in doing complex litigation of serious cases and death penalty cases. Not every attorney is built to meet these demands, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to find and keep those who are capable. I ask that you please find an equitable resolution to the current action so the attorneys, who are strong enough and resilient enough to do this important, critical work, can get back to the work they do and the work that the community needs them doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Benson. Thank you very much for coming down. I did let you go over as you represent a large number of the people in the audience today, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. I raised my hand in Zoom, but I know it's probably difficult to see with others on the screen here. Just an overall explanation for my absence in chambers today. I want to make it clear because I suspect we have subsequent speakers, perhaps a number of them, speaking on the same subject, that I'm not there because, as a matter of routine practice, I do not cross pick-up lines. So that's why I am participating remotely. Out of respect for that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Feel free to jump in whenever necessary because I do not see your hand raised. Next speaker, please.
Okay, Ms. Orozco.
Esteemed colleagues, I stand here before you, a humble servant and resident, born and raised in the city of Sacramento, South Sacramento, to be specific. I've worked and grown up on these streets. I've been with the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office for the last 19 years. I want to tell you that I stand in solidarity with my colleagues, people that I've pulled all-nighters with, people who I collaborate with in the courtroom. We take on secondary trauma of the victims we serve. We're talking children who have endured the most aggravated abuse, sodomy, rape, oral copulation, the things we don't want to talk about at the dinner table. This is our lives, and we absorb that. There are stresses that we go in. We've sat through hours of counseling in order to get through the daily experience of what we have to endure as we take on that vicarious experience of the people that we chose to serve. Each and every one of us could go somewhere else and make three or four times the amount of income, but we've taken an oath, just like you have, to serve a community that is in great need. Colleagues, I've sat at that dais with you, and I have utter respect for each and every one of you and the job that you take on, a job that not everybody understands is so complex and so difficult. However, with the limited resources that we have to use to protect and serve our community, I will tell you that it has been harder in the last year for the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office to function with the caseloads and the hours that we have to put in. It's often thankless jobs, and we're doing everything we can to hold on. Nobody wants to be here. It's at a tremendous cost. And I will tell you that each and every one of us is enduring a cost in a different way. For me, I have to question whether or not I can pay out-of-pocket dues for the medicines that I need to take, and that might be a life-threatening decision. Not to be dramatic, but I just really want to hammer in the gravity of the decision that we're all making to be here and respectfully appreciate your consideration of our labor contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be heard on this. As you may not be surprised, I have a profound appreciation for the work done by the members of the District Attorney's Association. I've had a professional relationship and oftentimes personal relationship with people from that phenomenal office for well over three decades now. And I've had the occasion to see them, to witness them firsthand in the selfless dedication they show each and every day, and oftentimes well into the late night hours. If you drive by 901G Street in the nighttime hours, you'll oftentimes see lights burning in there. Weekends, you see DDAs in there preparing cases to go to trial. It is a relentless responsibility. They do so extraordinarily well. And we have had, for whatever reason, this is not a Chamber of Commerce moment for Sacramento, but suffice to say, we are very well, in fact, I say overrepresented in terms of extraordinary terrible homicide trends. We've had a significant number of mass murder incidents, of serial killers in this county. And each and every one of those occasions, and it's great work on the part of frontline law enforcement, but the DA's office has managed to bring those cases to trial and provide justice to the community. And while, again, my allegiance to the DA's office probably doesn't come as a surprise, I also have a profound sense of appreciation for the members of the Public Defender's Office. I've been on the other side, been cross-examined by them. For the most part, extraordinary work is done there. That minimizes the likelihood of costly, laborious appeals to convictions. Good legal work is necessary on both sides of the divide in our system of justice, our adversarial system of justice. So I take this issue extraordinarily importantly in terms of the perspective of a now-retired taxpayer in this county, and I urge you to move swiftly to ensure that their needs are met. Yeah, I'd like to refer, if I'm not too far on time.
You're way over, but that's okay.
Okay, I'll make it quickly. Look, I refer to the distinguished alums of the District Attorney's Office here in Sacramento County. They're very well represented on the bench, the Superior Court bench, most recently Amy Holiday elected to the Superior Court here. You have the now-chief justice or presiding justice of the Third District Court of Appeals. We've had in the past the chief justice of the California State Supreme Court, all alums of the Sacramento County DA's office. At some point, they had to make a choice as to where they were going to bring their talent, their intellect, their sage. They brought it to this office, and I think you want that trend to continue. So thank you for your time very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard, and I support these people very strongly.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Nicole Clavo, and I'm here in support of the men and women who work tirelessly to support the countless victims in the capital of California, I being one of those victims. I was supported day in and day out by both the DA Tenho and DDA Casey Newton, and still to this day, nine years later, they still check on me and count on me. The men and women who represent the victims of Sacramento, days don't end at 5:00 PM. Unlike many of you, they have to suppress some of the most horrific images and tragedies and things that none of you have ever experienced. Then they have to go home to their families and put a smile on their face as if nothing has happened, as if they didn't just have one of the most horrific conversations with families that have endured the most unfathomable experience. I ask you to look in the mirror and ask yourself, could this be you? Show that you appreciate these men and women, and by coming to the table and negotiating in good faith, give them a fair and equitable raise. How long do you think you can keep tenured professionals if they are not respected and appreciated? We urge you to show that you respect and honor the men and women by approving a raise.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good morning. My name is Angela Webb. I'm the CEO of Arrival Live California, and I'm going to give you a perspective of boots on the ground, working with the DA's office for over 16 years here in Sacramento County. That's three elected DAs and over 100 deputy district attorneys that I've worked with. Our mission is to reach our community and reach youth. And we developed programs that not only were absolutely excellent here in Sacramento County, but we were offered to go throughout the entire state to bring the same programs of DUI prevention, alcohol prevention, fentanyl prevention, and drugs. We did that with the relationship here in Sacramento County and the DAs. And although we tried many different district attorney's offices and they just didn't take, and the reason why is the DAs and the DDAs said, "That's not our job." But this office has dedicated employees that, long after their job is done, they still want to come out and talk to the community. They still want to provide the needed, necessary advisements for our community and for our youth. We started with impaired driving, and then we went three years ago when I met with DA Tenho and didn't want to assume there was a relationship like the others. And he said, "Angela, yes, but we want to reach more. Can you go and do town halls? Can you do parent meetings? Can you still be in schools?" So now we have programs that are reaching, last year, over 108,000 people. Our statistics of impaired driving are going down, and it's because of these fine men and women that come out after hours during lunchtime to speak to our families, our youth, and our communities. And I just want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Lanigan. Jeff? Okay. Emily Webb.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here this morning to show my support for the Attorneys Union. My name is Emily Webb, and I am a resident of the Richmond Grove area of Sacramento. My family and I lived with a homeless encampment in front of our home for almost a year in 2023. During that time, we had our lives threatened multiple times. Our property was trespassed upon. Every day, we had people trying to get into our backyard while we slept. My son couldn't safely ride his bike to school because there were people using and selling drugs right in front of our home and blocking our sidewalks. And we spent thousands of dollars and hours cleaning up after this encampment and trying to prevent it from growing and encroaching further onto our property. Despite reaching out to many city officials for help and submitting dozens of 311 requests, the only people who showed true concern for our circumstances and took ownership of the situation was the District Attorney's Office. The attorneys not only took time to meet with us and listen to our story, they took action on our behalf. They elevated our story within the Police Department, they helped us navigate systems that were confusing for us, and they worked hard to get the encampment cleared quickly. They have also kept in touch with us over this past year to make sure our needs continue to be met. I strongly believe this type of support is necessary for addressing problems in our community swiftly and effectively, and for making residents feel heard, valued, and safe. Not only is the District Attorney's Office a critical resource for our community, my family and I and many of our fellow residents feel like they are a part of our community. We know we can reach out to them when we need help, and we know they are working tirelessly to keep our community safe. I hope that the attorneys are valued for the work they do and supported in continuing that work because they are making Sacramento a better place to live. We need them. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you to all of the attorneys. We are so grateful for you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors. Trevor Jameson, President of Sacramento Area Firefighters Local 522. I came here today to support the Sacramento Attorneys Association. I think one of the things that makes a community great is the opportunity to have a thriving life, the core services. A lot of that is taking care of victims. It's also taking care and making sure that people are offered the representation they deserve through our Constitution. Firefighters are out there, attorneys are out there, our law enforcement are out there. I think the most important thing here is that these attorneys feel they have a place to work where they're wanted, where they're compensated well, and that they have opportunities for growth, wages, benefits, and working conditions. And I want the attorneys to know that the firefighters have their back, we're here to support them. We believe that it's time to get this thing done and move it forward, and so that everyone can get back to work, and we can all feel good about what's going on out there in the community of Sacramento County. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Mervyn Brookins, and I'm the founder of Brother to Brother Mentoring Organization here in Sacramento. Excuse me. I'm here this morning to reinforce what I believe everybody in this room already knows, and that's simply that our District Attorney's Office and our Public Defender's Office do extremely good work, they're extremely valuable, and they deserve to be compensated as such. Over the past several years, I've had the privilege of working with both of these offices, and I've been able to witness firsthand their forward-thinking leadership. For an example, the District Attorney's Office, even though they remain extremely diligent in their prosecutorial duties, they have opened up their office to the concerns of the community and allowed the community have it seated at the table, and they've been responsive to those concerns. The Public Defender's Office in recent years has elevated its standard of representation and is slowly but surely restoring the faith and confidence of the community in the system. So with that said, I would strongly urge and encourage you to resolve this matter as soon as possible and in a manner that reflects the value that our community has for both our District Attorney's Office and our Public Defender's Office. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lorna Alejandro. My daughter was a victim of sexual assault. My daughter was brave enough and smart enough to get evidence of how her perpetrator was victimizing her. She notified the family and contacted the Oak Grove Police Department. An investigation was conducted and then forwarded and reviewed by the Sacramento District Attorney's Office. The District Attorney's Office contacted my daughter and said that there would be a trial, the DA's office would seek justice for my daughter. She was scared, anxious, and didn't know what to expect. And I recall Danny Lee and Garrett Sewell explained the process to her, prepped her for trial, and eased her anxiety. They brief-supported and updated her every step of the way. They cared about her emotional and mental well-being, as well as that of our family. The DA's office provided a victim's advocate for her, and that was one of the smartest things because it gave my daughter the extra emotional support that she needed in the courtroom. Rochelle Beardsley also offered to be in the courtroom. The DA's office was efficient, professional, and compassionate with my daughter's case. She received justice. She's my hero. She was no longer a victim but a survivor of sexual assault. She has gone on to live her life and move forward. She has helped other sexual assault victims face their traumas and get help that they needed. She graduated from Sac State and is now a dance teacher-choreographer here in the Sacramento area. And this is possible because of the commitment, compassion, and dedication she received from the Sacramento District Attorney's Office. We appreciate and recognize the significant value of the Sacramento District Attorney's Office. Our daughter and her parents, we are forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Campbell. I am the California State Victim Services Manager for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and I happen to personally live in Sioux Frost District. As someone who works with victims of crime on a daily basis, when this all came down and I was enticed to come here and speak on the behalf of these attorneys, I found it a little bit ironic because part of my duties are to help victims prepare impact statements. And I feel like what I'm doing today is presenting an impact statement on all of their behalf. Public servants and attorneys play a significant role in the lives of victims. Victims count on the District Attorney's Office to ensure that their rights are protected throughout the criminal justice process, and they rely on public defenders to work diligently to hold individuals accountable for their actions by securing a conviction. These are critical actions to help provide a sense of justice to victims. As an advocate, we count on these partnerships with the prosecutors to make sure that our victims' voices are heard and that they are kept informed during the criminal justice process. If you don't hear anything else I say today, I would like you to remember this part. To withhold or impede the continuous work of the people who are committed to public safety creates a dangerous environment. I'm here today to support the Attorneys Association, and I strongly encourage this Board to do the right thing. We need every single one of these individuals back in the courtrooms protecting our victim rights and seeking justice. It is essential to maintaining a fair and just society. On a side note, I would like to say that I have a very good relationship with a lot of the staff members in this office, and I can reach a lot of them after hours, or they reach out to me after hours, on the weekends, text calls to keep me updated so that my victims aren't wondering what's going to happen. We're always very well-informed, and I appreciate that relationship and commitment to the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Seriram. I'm a sergeant with the Sheriff's Office and currently assigned to the Deputy Sheriffs Association. I'm here to remind everybody that the justice system is not in place in Sacramento right now, and that's a pretty polarizing thought when you really stop and think about it. Fair negotiation is the cornerstone of labor relations. When Matt Connolly fails to engage in good faith, it undermines the entire process. The work that the District Attorneys and Public Defenders do is vital to maintaining justice in our community. If we allow their morale and compensation to deteriorate due to unfair labor practices, we risk harming the very foundation of our legal system. Sacramento County has a legal and ethical obligation to negotiate in good faith. By refusing to do so, Matt Connolly is failing his duty not only to these dedicated employees but also to the citizens he serves. This continued refusal to negotiate could have long-term consequences, including higher turnover rates, decreased efficiency, and potential decline in the quality of legal representation available to all of our residents of Sacramento County. In addition to these concerns, I want to highlight the findings of an independent fact-finder who conducted a thorough investigation into the negotiations. A 60-page report, which is very comprehensive, clearly outlines instances of bad faith on the part of Matt Connolly and the Office of Labor Relations. The fact-finder's analysis leaves no doubt that these attorneys are owed an equity raise, including retro pay. The report's findings are not merely recommendations but are rooted in evidence that reflects the true state of these negotiations. Ignoring such a detailed and impartial assessment would be a disservice to the employees and to the integrity of our labor negotiation process. It should also be noted that many of the observations noted in the fact-finding report are representative of our own union's most recent contract negotiations. This is not Matt Connolly's first rodeo. I urge the Board of Supervisors to take these findings seriously and to hold Matt Connolly and the Office of Labor Relations accountable for their actions. It is unacceptable for the county to dismiss the report's conclusions, which are based on extensive research and fact-based analysis. The attorneys in question are not asking for anything beyond what has independently been verified as fair and necessary. Furthermore, I urge the Board to direct their CEO David Villanueva and Chief Labor Negotiator Matt Connolly to bargain with integrity and good faith, or find replacements who will. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Dustin Smith. I'm the President of the Sacramento Police Officers Association. Unfair or below-market wages undoubtedly lead to recruitment retention issues. We need fairly-paid DA and defense attorneys to ensure the quality of our local justice system. We currently have a highly cooperative relationship between the DA's office and the Public Defender's Office. I believe this is directly related to the quality of the people you currently have working towards justice in this county. I would ask the Board to fairly consider the arbitrator's recommendations in this case. I would also like you to consider binding arbitration as a balanced and effective mechanism to avoid these issues in the future. It has proven to be an essential component to fair negotiations between the City of Sacramento and the first responders that serve the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we find ourselves at the end of the list that we have on hand. Mr. District Attorney, would you like to speak now, or, as we spoke earlier, would you like to wait until after our action items?
I defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
You can... Morning.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, this morning, and I want to particularly thank Mr. Chairman for allowing me the opportunity to exceed the two minutes that is normally reserved for open session. To be a prosecutor or public defender requires a unique skill set and a true dedication to public service. Who would you trust to interview an eight-year-old child who was molested? A prosecutor. Who would you trust to try a homicide case and help a grieving family obtain justice? A prosecutor. Who would you trust to defend a loved one who was facing a lifetime in prison? A public defender. I know firsthand the sacrifices that these attorneys give each and every day to our community. The 60-plus hours work week, the sleepless nights, the missed dinners with families, the missed recitals in soccer games, the trauma that comes with the emotional, mental, and physical toll of having to look at autopsy photos or review and listen to child abuse. This is all carried every day by the attorneys in this room. These attorneys carry that with them, but they will often tell you that this is a calling. Now, while we often disagree on the particular merits of a case, both prosecutors and public defenders in Sacramento will agree that we have exceptional lawyers in Sacramento, that are the backbone, that are the heart and soul of our criminal justice system. My office prosecuted the Golden State Killer and a number of other nationally-recognized cases, but who defended those individuals? The public defenders did. Over the last week and a half, I've seen firsthand frustration boil over. I've seen firsthand how there's been a sense of desperation grip over 250 county lawyers where that backbone has broken, that heartbeat has stopped beating, that soul has been crushed. Trials have been delayed, preliminary hearings have been pushed back. Victims and witnesses and defendants have had to wait and wait and wait while the wills of justice come close to a screeching halt. And last night, yesterday afternoon, I was in court until 5:00 PM trying to make sure that an attempted murder case wasn't dismissed as a result of the strike. Somebody who had been shot, somebody, separate person had been stabbed. Now, you've heard from, most recently, Ms. Benson and myself. And what I would tell you is this: what I've seen in the courtroom, I've also seen things outside the courtroom. In the last several weeks, I've seen and heard of attorneys in my office crying in the bathroom because they see no end in sight to this strike. I have attorneys and friends who are prosecutors, who are fighting cancer, who are dealing with family crisis, and yet they're on the picket lines, worried about their health benefits, not getting paid because they care about their profession and see it in crisis. And as I've mentioned, and as you've heard from Ms. Benson, the workload for the attorneys in Sacramento is simply crushing. Let me give you an example. Last Tuesday, when the attorneys were on strike, my office had to review 137 felony police reports that were submitted. And we had to review those for charging decisions and make a determination for a dangerous criminal released from jail. And we only had three hours to do so because of court deadlines. And that didn't include, for example, all the other reports coming into domestic violence, sexual assault, gangs, homicide, and our juvenile division. And this morning, because of the three-day holiday weekend, my short-staffed office has to review 162 felony reports by 11:00 AM. 11:00 AM. Now, last year, my office prosecuted 10,000 misdemeanor cases and 7,000 felonies. Each one of these cases, each one of these files contain victims and witnesses who are your constituents, each one of them describing in gripping detail how crime has ripped the very fabric of their lives. Now, ideally, we would want seasoned, veteran, experienced courtroom-tested lawyers to be handling these cases from both the DA and the public defender's side, but reality is much different. Only 7% of my prosecutors have between 11 and 14 years of experience. 40% of the prosecutors in my office have less than five years of experience. Many left after COVID, many left to work less and make more money, and they never came back. Because of the strike and because of the widespread belief among the attorneys that the county doesn't care about its frontline workers who are working in the criminal justice system, many more are leaving. I know for a fact that there are several public defenders and several district attorneys that are actively looking for jobs elsewhere right now and applying for other offices. And when those attorneys leave, it's going to swell the caseload for those that remain. And I won't be able to backfill those attorneys because our attorneys in Sacramento make 18% less than their counterparts in Solano County. And you might be thinking, well, Solano County, their housing cost is higher. But the Level 4 attorneys in San Joaquin County make more than the Level 4 attorneys in Sacramento, and that's just right next door. The exodus of prosecutors will force my office to turn back the clock 20 years. Look, I believe in prevention, intervention, and education. Angela Webb talked about these programs where we're out there teaching and educating kids about fentanyl. I'm going to have to pull back from that. We have a program that talks about internet bullying and cyberbullying for kids. I'm going to have to pull back from that. In regards to our community prosecutors that are out there engaging, I'm going to have to pull back from that because I have to protect the core services as the attorneys leave. Now, the failure to avoid the strike and to resolve it has damaged both offices, public safety, and our criminal justice system. And here's the deal: six months before the current contract was set to expire, the attorney union actually went to Chief Labor Negotiator for the county, Matt Connolly, and asked to negotiate. But Matt Connolly came to the table late, unprepared, and empty-handed, without even a salary survey in hand. He told the attorneys, "I'm not going to give you any equity raises." That's like me filing criminal charges without even reading the police report. That is offensive, and in many respects, bad faith. Now, Mr. Connolly then waited until two weeks before the contract was set to expire, before presenting the county's salary survey. A salary survey that didn't even include health benefits, which had always been included. And when he was called out on that and said, "Why is it disincluded?", he says, "Well, take me to the arbiter." And then he went on to say, "Well, you know what? The fact-finder, it's not binding, so just take me there." At best, that's gameship; at worst, that is bad faith. Now, why would the county's lead labor negotiator wait and delay? Well, we have the answer to that because the fact-finder actually wrote in his report, and I'm going to read it, quote, "It is the county that, in 2022, intentionally or not, acted consistently with a perverse incentive and gained a $1.5 million windfall. The evidence does not show any ethical basis for the county to retain the cost savings it gained from the half-year it failed to respond to SCAA's 2021 request for negotiation and subsequent failure to mutually set negotiating deadlines. Though SCAA did not establish on this record that the county intentionally sought to save costs by delaying and frustrating negotiations, unintentional understaffing also should not allow the county to retain half a year of wages it was already planning to pay SCAA members." Mr. Connolly's delay was the county's windfall at the expense of the attorneys. Now, I want to provide you with a different perspective. Assume for a moment that the county had agreed to pick a particular fact-finder, and assume for a moment that that fact-finder then said, "You know what? The attorneys are fairly paid. There's no disparity here." Well, if the attorneys came before you and asked for a raise in that situation and went on strike, I believe that they would roundly be criticized. But the opposite happened in this situation. And so my question is, is Mr. Connolly getting criticized in the same way that the attorneys would be criticized if the fact-finding report was different? Or did he get a promotion? Now, I understand and appreciate that you must be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and that no one department should be overpaid or overcompensated, but there is also a responsibility to treat the employees fairly and reasonably, and I feel that that has not been done in this situation. Now, how do I put this? I've never been accused of not telling people what I think. I have earned a reputation perhaps for being aggressive and determined, and that comes from years of being in the courtroom. But those years have also earned me a reputation for being straightforward, fair, and honest. I do not relish what I'm about to say, and I do not enjoy criticizing others, but it needs to be said. As frustrated as I am towards the lead negotiator and the labor relations for the county in terms of their tactics, I am even more frustrated and disappointed in the CEO and the fact that we need not be here today at this stage. And yes, I am talking about David Villanueva because months ago, he had the opportunity to avoid this and to prevent this, and he does now.
Can you wrap up, Mr. District Attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Two years ago, I came to Mr. Villanueva, and I asked him to resolve this impasse because it would undermine public safety. In that time, he went on to become the CEO of Sacramento County. Since that time, David Villanueva has done little to nothing to resolve this impasse. As a matter of fact, I think he made it even worse. After much urging, he provided a counterproposal last week to the union, and that counterproposal was to give a 3% equity raise, but in exchange for that, actually would require the union to give back the 3% in deferred comp. That was like taking three steps forward and three steps backward. That was like throwing gasoline onto the fire. If you notice, unfortunately, there was an uptick in intensity in the strike in the middle of last week, and it was because of this offer. Because even the COLA increase dropped the floor to 1%, which the attorneys hadn't seen in a while. It was like throwing gasoline onto the fire. And the attorneys, I had attorneys that were not on strike, but after receiving that offer, they crossed the picket line and they remained on strike. Now, I've heard talk that the attorneys are getting paid too much or would get paid too much, but the fact of the matter is this: these attorneys went and earned a four-year degree, went to law school, accumulated 100,000 worth in debt, passed a bar examination that is the most difficult in the country. Yes, they are public servants, but they are skilled public servants and highly-educated public servants. I'm not asking for a windfall here, but here's the situation. In the last two years, and in the last two weeks, my question is, I've seen a complete lack of urgency on behalf of the CEO's office. Where is the counterproposal? What has the CEO's office done in regards to a just resolution? What has the CEO's office done in regards to understanding the attorney's position? What has the CEO's office done in regards to trying to move this past a stalemate? Where has the CEO's office been in regards to informing you of everything that you need to know? Where has the CEO's office been in regards to updates, in regards to closed sessions, in regards to counterproposal? Where have they been in the last several days as we have faced the most spiraling public safety and labor strike that we've seen in the last 10 years? And I will end in this note. As disheartened as I am by what has transpired, I do see a path forward. I deeply believe through my conversations with each and every one of you, the elected officials up here, I strongly believe that each and every one of you, through experience and through my conversation with you, believe in public safety, that you are pro-safety and pro-worker. I honestly believe and feel, and I know that each and every one of you want to see a fair resolution in this. I know that because I've spoken to you. I know that because I've worked with you on a number of different issues, and I support each and every one of you. But I am asking respectfully that we have a fair resolution in this case, not about next year's contract or the year after that, but right now, and retro pay. And I am also asking respectfully, along with fire that you put on the June 2025 ballot, a proposal to amend the county charter, precluding prosecutors and public defenders from going on strike, but in exchange for binding arbitration, so we never have to go through this again. And I will end on this. I know that I've been very strident in my comments, but I thought quite a long time before I came here and what I would say. And those strident comments are the result of an urgency and alarm that I see. Both offices have been damaged. Our criminal justice system has been damaged. Public safety has been undermined, and that is why I come with a heavy heart but with deep respect for all five of you and ask for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I can't get into the merits of the comments that have been made here today, but I just wanted to say one thing so that everybody out there, regardless of the title that you have on your T-shirt, you walk away from this knowing one thing, and that is that that man has poured into this issue nights, weekends, reaching out to us, and going above and beyond really what I think he needed to do. So I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
That takes us to our action items for this morning. First item, please, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so for item two, you are acting as the in-home supportive services public authority.
Let's take three minutes just to let the room clear so that we can get her here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Supervisor Serna. Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, for item two, you're acting as the in-home supportive services public authority. This is to approve the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Fiscal Year 2425 Revised Recommended Budget. And I also did pass out handouts at the DA's, so you should have that.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Supervisor John. John's coming.
Yes. We can put you back to the end like we used to, if you like.
You remembered.
You remember.
I don't know if you need the slides. You guys have the items.
Let me just start here.
We have this handout here.
You got those. Okay. Good morning. My name's John Kozitzza. I'm currently serving in the role of Executive Director for the Sacramento County in-home supportive services public authority. Before you is our final budget for the year. It's merely an adjustment relative to the book's closing at the end of June. What I wanted to do this morning is give you a kind of a very brief overview, which is a starting point for our office going forward, a reference point, so in future we can expand on any one of these particular areas, but it's really kind of giving everybody a baseline of what we've been doing for the last several years and where we've come to at this point. The page one that you have is an overview. It goes back to the formation of the public authority. I'm going to start from the top, going down little by little. Since 2018, we, our office is going through a culture change. It's really a change in philosophy, a forward-looking approach, bringing staff together, connecting with our demand, our customers, and it's taken quite a while. To show the level of work, the things that are going on behind the scenes, the public, we have a public counter, and our activity on that on an annual basis, actually on a monthly basis, is right about 2,500 customers that we're seeing at a minimum. We went from having intermittent public counter service throughout the week to now having it five days a week. We're having to staff the public counter with two full-time staff individuals in order to support our customers. Provider enrollment started in '09, and it's progressively been increasing. As you can see, we've, we were going to pass somewhere around 9,000 back in 1819, but then COVID hit, and so we didn't exceed 9,000 caregivers being enrolled in the program until this 2324. We have an accident care program, which is really a backup program and have had that since '07. We serve anywhere between three to about seven individuals a month, and some of those individuals receive up to three services calls in that month on an ongoing, month to month, but there is a limit of three. Our registry, we've started counting and keeping track of what we're doing and how we're approaching that so we can improve that service. That is our ultimate goal in this particular office. We also have background reports that we have been evaluating since really the beginning of 2000, but they didn't really pick up until '09 when provider enrollment came online. And this last year, we actually received reports of a variety of statuses, little over 17,000, and we have more than one staff person trying to keep up with that on a regular basis. And the last slide shows that during this entire time of growth, our office staff has been remained relatively flat. We've been able to handle that by cross-training our office from the top down. So if we, and we have on occasion periodically, we have about half staff, but we are now at a spot where we book appointments in advance so people have some choices, but we are booked in advance. So if we get, which we've had recently, the last couple of months, people out sick, vacation, COVID was one of the situations, whoever's left, we sit down and we work through to give those customers a service that we've already committed to giving them. To that end, I will say that back in the beginning, back in 2018, we had customer compliments. Usually, it was a couple of people that really had that personality that you, you know, would always receive those positive comments. What I have been seeing in the last six to 12 months is receiving comments, compliments across the board for all staff. I don't know that anyone has been excluded at this point. We have individuals from a comment card, emails, verbal thank-yous. A couple of weeks ago, we got flowers that were given to two staff individuals. We've had several boxes of pizza brought in for a thank you at around lunchtime. We've had cakes, pastries, people bring coffee. The just, the response that we're getting from customers is very positive and is very noteworthy within this office, so I do want to point that out. I have on here a couple of quotes from actual customers commenting about our services. One of the things that our staff does is accommodate us individuals to the best of our ability. We have rules and we have some limitations. However, depending on what the circumstances is and how much we can work with the individual, we do provide a variety of accommodations to help get them through the enrollment process and to get their paycheck ultimately. Our education program has been partnering now with the Public Health Department. Also, career pathways at the state level has been supportive of their funding and to get the program up and running post-COVID. And we are also expanding our staff selection process to include languages, which again, I am hearing from the customers, a huge thank you. I mean, it's just amazing that they're just so grateful and surprised that staff speak a variety of different languages, so it really does connect with them. All of that, I would say, is, it's quite a testament, and I really wanted to give you guys that perspective at this point because a lot of this work has been happening behind the scenes. And it really would be hard for me to point any particular individual out. It wouldn't do them a little bit of injustice. However, I do want to make a comment to one individual who has been instrumental in bringing staff together, and I just could not have been done without that individual, and I think staff would be okay with this. Ms. Marjorie Albrecht has been integral in bringing our culture forward. She's very connected with the entire office. She's an individual who, from the beginning, she has been showing up around 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. She would leave around 6:00 in the evening on a long-term basis. It's only recently can I get her to get out by 5:00. She still shows up around 7:00 on a Monday through Friday basis, and she's available even during the weekends when we have other customer needs that are very specific. But I did want to point out that this is the kind of individual that this county is nurturing and attracting, and in our office, this is going to be a very solid support going forward. So with that, if you had any other questions on any particular point, happy to address those.
Thank you, John. That was probably the most thorough report that I've seen you give. That was very enlightening.
And I'm a little nervous. I'm not sure if it was the pressure.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work. I just have one kind of silly question is, you referred to customers. When you're referring to customers, are they the care providers or are they the clients?
They're both. Our ultimate goal is to serve the recipient. Everything that we do is to that particular end, and the registry is our ultimate focus this year. A lot of the work we've been doing up to the last couple of years is really trying to bring the office together, get connected with technology, change our culture so that it's forward-thinking. We are very helpful. Staff is very helpful. We find what we need to do to help the recipient is help the caregiver really on education, getting through the program, getting their timesheet with technology, language, anything that we can do to help make that process go a little faster. Again, our volume is up higher, so we're just getting a lot of the different pieces. We had smaller, they're now proportionally, they're growing. But our ultimate goal is the recipient, getting a caregiver that will have the skills, have the language, be consistent, show up, as well as in the tail end, teaching the recipient, giving them an opportunity to learn how to be an employer because this is a very delicate relationship that, so that they can, they can keep, have that caregiver stay for the longest period of time. That is something that's in progress, and that's a vision and a goal that we're working to actually bring all that together through the educational program.
So, and you may recall, over the years, I've asked for more training for your folks. Are you satisfied that we're heading in the right direction as far as training?
We are headed in the right direction in this office, absolutely. There is a need. This program is growing without question. COVID actually kind of stalled us out, and after the emergency orders went away in February 23, in the six months, I started to see a very sharp increase, and that put a lot of pressure on us rather quickly. As you saw on the last slide, our position's been relatively flat. I did a brief analysis, and when you include vacancies and sick leave and so forth, we're actually operating at a lower level than those positions. With the support of the department, we've been able to ask and get a few more positions slowly over the next couple, well, the last couple of years. And we, I do anticipate needing a couple more positions over the next couple of years at the very least. Our fundamental issue is truly trying to identify the demand because the customers come to us, and until they come to us, we don't know who they are. We're here to help them who don't have those other resources available. So that's been a real challenge on our end, and this presentation today is really trying to give you a reference point going forward. So from this point, we can build, ask questions, focus on any particular area that we are starting to see that we need to have some attention put.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We do not for this item.
Okay, I see no other board members punched in, so I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Okay, so...
Actually, we need to take a roll call vote.
Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Yes.
Serna.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Hume.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Next item, please.
And then for your next item, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the public hearing on and consideration of possible revisions to the fiscal year 2425 approved recommended budget and capital improvement plan.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for your time this morning. I'm David Villanueva, your county executive, and I'm happy to be here this morning to present your 2425 revised recommended budget. This revised budget reflects adjustments from your approved budgets, which you did back in June, and based on most recent information from both the state and the federal government and their allocations, in addition to adjustments in revenue and expenditures. As Amanda gets set up there, I just wanted to thank her and her staff of the Office of Budget and Debt Management for their incredible dedication to getting this budget binder put together. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Amanda, and she'll go into quite a bit of detail on this. Thank you.
Great. Good morning, Chair Kennedy and board members. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and as David mentioned, I'll be presenting the fiscal year 202425 revised recommended budget. So as you know, the recommended budget for this fiscal year was approved in June, and the purpose of this revised recommended budget is really to reflect changes based on new information available since that budget was prepared. And that includes things like the rebudgeting of grants and projects that weren't completed last fiscal year, changes in state, federal, and other dedicated funding and associated expenditures, updated estimates of discretionary and semi-discretionary revenues based on new data and revised assumptions, actual ending fund balances, including for the general fund. And then based on this new information, we make recommendations for additional growth and reserve changes funded with the change in resources. And I'll just note here that because the purpose of the revised recommended budget is really to reflect these changes to the budget that was approved in June, most of what I'll be talking about really focuses on the changes compared to the approved budget. Okay, so starting off to look first at the all funds budget. Recommended appropriations or budgeted expenditures and transfers across all funds total $9.2 billion in the revised recommended budget, which is a $340 million increase compared to the approved budget. This includes a $68 million increase in the general fund, which I'll address later in the presentation, and a combined $272 million increase for all other funds. Of that $272 million increase in other funds, $249 million represents what we call base budget changes, so that includes rebudgeting for capital projects, which are also reflected as recommended changes to the capital improvement plan. And then $23 million of that $272 million represents other fund appropriations associated with new recommended growth, including $20 million in the roads fund that was prioritized in June. Of that $9.2 billion in total appropriations, about $2.1 billion represents transfers between county funds, so that's money that's sort of moving around within the county budget. And then that means that the net budgeted expenditures, excluding all of that transfer activity, total about $7.1 billion. So looking at what makes up that, looking at what makes up that $9.2 billion in total appropriations, you can see here that $2.1 billion is that transfer activity, again, the money that's moving between county funds. And then for the remaining $7.1 billion of net appropriations, $3.3 billion or a little less than half is in non-general fund budgets. These are expenditures that are largely funded by rate, fee, or other special revenue dedicated to a specific purpose. So an example of that would be utility fees paid by customers. For the remaining amount, which is all within the general fund, $1.8 billion of expenditures are funded with nondiscretionary departmental revenues, which are also dedicated to a specific purpose, and that could be from customer fees in non-general fund departments, and also includes a large amount of state and federal funding, especially for the county's social services departments. Also in the general fund, reimbursements from the semi-discretionary restricted funds fund about $1 billion in expenditures, and these reimbursements include 1991 and 2011 realignment and Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue that's received from the state and then funds programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. And then finally, discretionary resources in the general fund, which include both discretionary revenues like property taxes and sales taxes, as well as one-time fund balance, fund about $1 billion of expenditures. And then we usually refer to the appropriations or the expenditures that are funded with these discretionary resources as net county cost, so you'll hear me use that term in the presentation. So looking at that $7.1 billion in budgeted expenditures excluding the transfers, this chart shows how those expenditures are distributed by functional area in the county's budget, with the largest share at 34% for expenditures in the county's social services departments that are listed here. The second-largest share, 32% for community services, public safety and justice, the third-largest share at 16%, and that includes departments in the county's public safety and justice agency, as well as the sheriff and district attorney budgets. And then expenditures for administrative services and general government represent smaller shares at 12% and 6% respectively. And I'll just note that overall, these percentages are very similar to the approved budget percentages. Okay, so turning now to look just at the general fund and really focusing on those recommended changes from the June approved budget, we do have an overall increase in discretionary resources available that results primarily from one-time fund balance carry forward, and that's unspent funding from the prior fiscal year and is higher than was estimated for the approved budget. So because most of the increase in fund balance is used to fund expenditures, the budget is balanced with one-time resources to a greater extent than in the approved budget. I'll show what that looks like on a chart a little bit later. Consistent with the June budget approval, the prioritized growth that was identified in June is all recommended for funding now in this revised recommended budget. And as I'll discuss later, additional funded growth and priority needs are also recommended for funding, including backfill of certain reductions in dedicated revenue, although not all of those reductions are recommended for backfill. And then with the remaining fund balance, we're recommending reserve contributions as called for in the board's reserve policy, and I'll be talking about reserves more later in the presentation as well. And then finally, I'll just note here that a reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA revenues approved by the board in April to more flexibly fund certain ARPA-related expenditures results in ARPA-related fund balance in the general fund, which is set aside in ARPA-related reserves with no impact to the rest of the general fund budget. So this slide illustrates the availability and use of general fund discretionary resources and shows the changes relative to the approved budget. On the left, we show discretionary resources available, including both one-time sources and ongoing revenues. The actual beginning general fund available fund balance is $36 million higher than was estimated for the approved budget, and that's when that counting for the ARPA-related fund balance shown at the bottom. One of the reasons for the higher-than-estimated fund balance is that expenditures for the new property tax system last fiscal year were lower than budget just due to project timing. So as a result, $5 million that was not spent last year needs to be retained in the property tax system reserve, so that reduces the amount of reserve release, and that's what you see here in the middle of that box on the left-hand side. So that reduces that by $5 million. Discretionary revenues, which are largely ongoing resources, are estimated to be $3 million higher than in the approved budget, primarily as a result of increased interest earnings in the general fund, which results both from sustained higher interest rates and from higher fund balances as reserves have been built in recent years. These higher interest earnings are partially offset by lower estimates of sales tax revenues as we continue to see both slowing inflation and lower projected sales activity in certain categories. So together, the sum of these discretionary resources on the left must equal the use of discretionary resources on the right. of discretionary resources on the right, which includes both net county costs, so those expenditures that are funded with discretionary resources, and reserve contributions. And then you can also see the ARPA-related fund balance and reserves stated separately at the bottom of these boxes. So while I'm going to talk in more detail about the use of discretionary resources later in the presentation, you can see that net county cost in the revised recommended budget is $27 million higher than in the approved budget, and we're also recommending additional reserve increases of $7 million for a total additional use of discretionary resources of $34 million, which is equal to the total additional discretionary resources available. One thing, though, to point out is that you can see while our net county cost increased by $27 million, discretionary revenue only increased by $3 million. So that means we are relying on one-time fund balance to fund expenditures to a greater extent than in the approved budget. And this is the chart that shows you what that looks like. So this chart is showing the actual general fund beginning fund balance for fiscal year 2425, both what we estimated in June for the approved budget and then now the actual fund balance that's included in the revised recommended budget. And then it's also showing the same information for prior-year budgets, with the top of each bar in this chart representing the total beginning fund balance available in that year's budget. So looking at the totals, you can see that historically, the amount has been around $50 million with the very high fund balances starting in 2021, due primarily to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And as these impacts have subsided, we've seen decreasing fund balances in each of the last two fiscal years and expect further decreases in future years, which is why it's important not to rely on this funding source for ongoing expenditures. If you look at the blue portion of each of the bars, that shows the amount of fund balance to fund current-year expenditures, while the orange portion represents the amount set aside in reserves each year. And you can see that with this revised recommended budget, we are funding more expenditures with fund balance than was the case in June, although I will note that this increase is largely for one-time costs, with about $80 million funding ongoing expenditures compared to the $76 million in June. So that $80 million represents a structural imbalance in the budget, funding ongoing expenditures with one-time resources, and it means that additional ongoing resources would be needed to avoid reductions in future years. Okay, so in addition to discretionary resources, another source of funding that I mentioned earlier is what we call semi-discretionary resources. So that includes 1991 and 2011 realignment funding and Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue. So this is revenue that's received in restricted funds and then transferred to the general fund to fund eligible expenditures, again, in social services and public safety departments. Semi-discretionary reimbursements, which are the funding source in the general fund, are increasing by about $3 million in total, which is the net result of an $8 million increase or use of mental health realignment reserves for additional behavioral health expenditures, a $7 million reduction in public safety sales tax revenue, which requires an equivalent increase in net county cost to fund those expenditures that were previously funded with public safety sales tax revenue, and then a $3 million increase in other categories, which includes some recommended growth that I will describe later. So looking at appropriations in the general fund, of the overall $68 million increase compared to the approved budget, $48 million results from base budget changes for things like rebudgeting of projects, grants, and other obligations that were not fully expended last fiscal year, as well as additional state and federally funded programs and other costs that were approved after development of the June budget. Consistent with the contingency policy approved by the board last year, which calls for basing the size of the contingency each year on expectations for potential unplanned costs, we are recommending maintaining a contingency of approximately $15 million, which would be available to address unbudgeted costs for potential unanticipated or uncertain needs during the fiscal year. The general fund budget also reflects $4 million of expenditure reductions due to a loss of dedicated revenue, some of which is recommended to be restored in recommended growth. And overall, the budget includes $23 million in additional general fund appropriations compared to the approved budget for recommended additional new or enhanced programs. That's what we call growth. Most of the recommended growth was part of the June budget approval to be prioritized for funding in the revised recommended budget if sufficient additional resources were available. So I mentioned that the budget reflects expenditure reductions as a result of a loss of dedicated revenue. We call these categorical reductions. So those reductions are in child support services with a $1.1 million state funding reduction resulting in the elimination of 11 vacant positions and probation with four separate reductions. So the first is approximately $200,000 loss of federal funding for a position supporting treatment courts, and we are recommending backfilling this revenue loss with discretionary funding to continue providing these services that are critical to the county's jail population reduction efforts and complying with obligations under the May's consent decree. The second is $1.4 million for juvenile justice realignment, funding three positions in probation and one in the public defender's office. This reduction is also recommended for backfill funding due to the county's obligations under juvenile justice realignment. And the remaining two reductions represent impacts from the state budget and are not recommended for backfill. This includes approximately $500,000 for post-release community supervision funding, resulting in the deletion of two vacant positions, and approximately $700,000 for Community Corrections Performance Incentive Act funding resulting in the deletion of three vacant positions. So while this revised recommended budget focuses on changes compared to the approved budget, it's important not to lose sight of the new or enhanced programs already included in the approved budget, which are still included in the revised recommended budget. So overall, the approved budget funded over $100 million in all funds growth, with over $50 million of that in the general fund. On top of that, as part of the June budget approval, the board also prioritized an additional $20 million in general fund growth for inclusion in the revised recommended budget, again, should sufficient additional resources be available. The revised recommended budget includes funding for all of this prioritized growth plus additional recommended growth of $3 million. And the revised recommended budget also includes $23 million of non-general fund appropriations that are primarily linked to this general fund growth. So an example of that is, you know, there's $20 million of general fund for roads. It's $20 million in the general fund. It's to transfer to the roads fund, and it's also $20 million of expenditures in the roads fund. So that's the biggest example of a linked growth. So this table is showing the growth that was prioritized in June for inclusion in the revised recommended budget, all of which is now recommended to be funded. So you can see listed here that includes for animal care services, and this is the reallocation of a veterinarian to a chief of shelter medicine, for emergency services, $330,200, for one-time audiovisual system upgrades to the county's emergency operations center. I will note that this is less than the $500,000 identified in June, and that's because we now have updated funding and cost estimates. So this is the updated amount that is required for that project. And then finally, that $20 million contribution from the general fund to the roads fund that I just mentioned, along with the associated expenditures in the roads fund for pavement rehabilitation and maintenance of county roads. So as I mentioned earlier, in addition to that prioritized growth, we're also recommending new growth either as a result of additional dedicated funding or to address county obligations. So the general fund growth is listed here and includes the backfilling of the two probation reductions that I described earlier, which are funded with net county cost and then approximately $800,000 of realignment reserves. Net county cost of approximately $900,000 is recommended to fund four positions in the sheriff's office to facilitate medical, dental, and mental health appointments, which occur in the jail facilities, as well as for off-site medical procedures. As the county attains further compliance with the May's consent decree, the number of inmates receiving health services has increased significantly, which has increased the number of sheriff escorts required to facilitate that inmate care. In the Department of Human Assistance, restored state funding results in an additional $4.7 million for CalWorks' expanded subsidized employment and family stabilization programs. And also in human assistance, approximately $400,000 of additional net county cost is required for the county's share of the statewide automated welfare system. So looking now at recommendations for general fund reserves, overall, there is a $27 million net increase compared to the approved budget, and that includes the $15 million in reserves resulting from the ARPA, the April ARPA reallocation, and set aside to fund related expenditures, which results from the fund balance that was created as a result of that reallocation, as does not impact the rest of the general fund budget, as well as the $5 million reduction to the release from the property tax reserve that I mentioned earlier. And then the next two items listed here are both as called for in the board's reserve policy, with a $5 million contribution to general reserves required to maintain that balance at 10% of discretionary revenue, and then contributing to the service stability reserve the remaining discretionary resources of $2 million after first funding changes in base budget, new obligations, and the growth prioritized from June. So with these recommended contributions, total non-dedicated discretionary reserves, including the general reserves, service stability reserves, and a reserve for cash flow, would stand at $214 million. And then there's a couple of ways to think about that number. The first, as shown here, is that it represents about 5.7% of total general fund revenues, and that compares to the reserve policy target we are working towards of 17%. And then the other way is something that I'm sure looks familiar to many of you by now, which is this chart that shows what actually happened to the county's tax revenues during the Great Recession. And as you can see here, it took nearly 10 years for tax revenues to return to pre-recession levels, and that cumulative revenue loss over that 10 years would have required reserves of about $600 million to maintain funding at the 2008 level. Of course, if we experienced that same percentage loss today, the number would be even larger, and this chart also doesn't take into account other revenue sources that could be subject to the same sorts of impacts. But really, the message is, the more that we can be doing to build up reserves, the better positioned we will be to sustain service levels during a future recession. So in addition to the 2425 revised recommended budget, another recommendation we have looking forward to next year's budget relates to the Community Engagement Plan. And as you know, the framework we implemented beginning in 2021 includes launching and then annually updating a budget and brief budget summary, as well as an online budget explorer tool, both of which provide easily accessible and easy-to-understand budget information for the general public and are available on the county's website. Engagement with the county's advisory boards and commissions to inform department budget requests, public budget workshops to provide an overview of the county's budget and budget process, and an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions, and then working with a professional polling firm to conduct surveys and focus groups of residents countywide to understand the community's priorities for the county's budget. So leading up to the budget process in each of the last three years, the board has adopted budget priorities reflecting the community priorities, and then those priorities were used to develop and evaluate the budget requests recommended to the board. And continuing to build on that process that we've implemented, this year's plan would be to conduct budget priority focus groups this fall in advance of the fiscal year 2526 budget process, and we would plan to be back to the board in December with recommended budget priorities for the FY2526 budget. And that concludes the substance of my presentation. In addition to the recommended budget, the other recommended actions are shown here.
Okay, I have Mr. Villanueva and then Mr. Serna in the queue.
I'm sorry, Supervisor, that was from before.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Serna?
I didn't have my hand raised, I don't think. I apologize if I do.
Oh, okay, I was reading your text.
Oh, that was a prior issue.
Okay. Supervisor Hume?
Mr. Chairman, I did key in, and I would like to speak, so I'll go ahead and take that opportunity now.
Yeah, I'm doing so well.
I just want to thank you, Amanda, for all of the thoughtful work. Not only did you put into this revised budget, but also you and CEO Villanueva for giving me such a detailed briefing. I feel like every time I try and wrap my arms around it a little more, I try and really peek around the corners and see what I'm not seeing, and then just every time I get stymied because you're so accurate and thoughtful in everything that you present. And so I'm happy to take public comments that exist, but I would move to adopt the revised budget as is. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. I can second that motion, and I also wanted to thank Amanda for the years and the time and all the good work on the budget. I guess this is my last budget, and I also wanted to say that I think it's been extraordinary. I guess it started, I think it started with Ann Edwards and continued with David Villanueva and you to increase our reserves, and it was almost magical the way you brought us together with all the deputy county executives to get our goals in line and to just really focus that reserves are important. And I remember when I first came, I think the reserves were 1% of the general fund, or 1.3%. So we've come along, I think we've come a long way pretty quickly personally. And I also want to thank you for all the work that you do to create transparency and an open dialogue between community members regarding the budget, because it used to be we had a lot of misunderstandings. People would come and give public comment and have concerns, but a big part of it was just having a better understanding of how the budget works. And I think when you started those workshops, it really improved the communications and kind of I got everyone on the same page. So I wanted to thank you for all your hard work with that, and thanks for another smooth year.
Great, thanks. Well, thank you both for your comments, and I just, I want to echo what David said at the beginning. This is obviously a huge team effort, you know, department heads, their fiscal staff, the executive team, the amazing analysts and support staff in our office. And I also like to thank the board for adopting the reserve policy and the contingency policy and the budget priorities, which I think have all been a really useful framework for being able to develop budget recommendations to bring before you. So, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a couple of comments. Certainly echo the sentiments of Supervisor Hume and Supervisor Frost. Amanda, I really appreciate the time and effort that you take in educating all of us. And I just want to throw it out there now that I'll invite you to join me in community meetings maybe later this year to talk about the county budget and how the funds flow from these unincorporated communities into the services that the county provides. You'll love it. It'll be great. We'll do it at five, you know, four or five locations throughout the county. But also just really appreciate, certainly I support the motion on the table, and, you know, we always have a lot of discussion about the structural imbalance and certainly how it's made worse by this board being committed to providing additional funds to repair our roadways. And I mean, I don't know what alternative we have. I know we're looking for alternative funding sources. I know Supervisor Hume is working very hard to try to find specific funding sources to deal with the issues in the rural roads, but appreciate that being maintained as a priority here in your budget and from the DIAS up here because it's so desperately needed, but understanding that we can't rely on that forever, right? This general fund allocation. So, but I'm very supportive of the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Serna is just checking in.
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate all of Amanda's work, as has been noted by my colleagues.
Okay, I will exercise, you know, a brief moment of lack of discipline here and ask that, David, I had sent you a description of a very modest request that I would like to see added to the budget and would hope that maybe my colleagues could see it as a friendly amendment, and that's $62,500 for Alchemist for an EBT match at the Florin Farmers Market. Farmers Market. Florin Farmers Market, for those that don't know, is one of the busiest, sometimes the busiest, in the state of California, serving an environmental justice community, low-income community, in a food desert where people experience food insecurity. And this is money that would be a match for EBT for that population and would go a long way toward solving some food insecurity issues in South Sacramento.
I will amend my motion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, do we have public comment?
We do. We have a couple of comments. Marshall?
My name is Marshall Arnwin. I'm the legal policy advocate for the ACLU of Northern California's Criminal Justice Program. The ACLU is coming to urge the Board of Supervisors to use its discretion to invest today in a community-based organization named NorCal Resist. NorCal Resist provides free vehicle maintenance services to community members who have broken taillights or other equipment-related traffic violations, and this decreases the likelihood that community members who struggle to afford to have vehicle maintenance and are disproportionately stopped, searched, or harassed by sheriffs. This is important to fund because the ACLU authored a report that provides data collected under the California Racial Identifying Profiling Act, which finds that 68% of the time that sheriff deputies enforce equipment violations, like brake lights and non-moving violations such as invalid registration. These type of violations are an economic issue that marginalized communities have difficulties addressing. Because many community members cannot afford to regularly maintain their vehicle, they are subjected to unwanted traffic stops, where they will receive a fixer ticket that they already cannot afford, which adds to the economic harms they are under and contributes to a cycle of poverty. There are avenues to fund this innovative program. The ACLU can help the county with strategic ideas. The question is, is the county willing to help? NorCal Resist applied for the transient occupancy tax grant, but the county was, the county did not select NorCal Resist as a group to fund. Is the county willing to help? Community ties and partnerships have been established. The only support that is missing is from the county. This board has a historic opportunity to fund a unique, well-run, one-of-a-kind, innovative, thoughtful, intentional, and community-first service. There are ways that we can collaborate to fund this important organization, but is the county willing to help? The ACLU has data that shows how we came to this conclusion, and I'll leave this with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marshall. I will say that last budget, I did ask for our staff to look into this as an intriguing idea. Marshall, I would suggest that we continue having conversations, but if TOT money is the pot of money that we would be looking at, the proposal that you sent me needs some serious pencil sharpening because it's far beyond what we allocate for TOT money. So, thank you. Next.
Samuel?
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, esteemed supervisors. My name is Sam Greenley. I'm the Executive Director of Alchemist Community Development Corporation, or Alchemist CDC. I wasn't quite expecting your amendment there, Chair, right at the end, but I wanted to come and thank all of you. One of the programs that we run is CalFresh EBT access at local farmers markets, and last year the county made a significant investment in supporting that work at eight different farmers markets throughout the county. That has had a tremendous impact this year. Just at those markets, we've seen, we're on track to serve over 40,000 county residents, to see one and a quarter million dollars in EBT and nutrition incentives spent at markets, and about a quarter million of that spending at these markets is going back into small farms and small food businesses in Sacramento County. So it's a tremendous impact for public health with promoting people eating fresh produce, for economic development as many small businesses in the region get their start at a farmer's market. It's just, the program's been around for more than a decade, and it's just taken off very significantly. I believe all of your offices have received communication requesting a reinvestment, including this amount for Florin for the new year. I believe you have all the details, your staff will have all those details, but we anticipate the next year it will grow even more, will be at more like one and a half million dollars spent at local farmers markets, closer to 300,000, going back into local farms and local food businesses. We really appreciate the investment so far. It aligns with the county's environmental justice goals, and we love to see delivering on those. You know, there's, sometimes people ask whether, you know, how do we get from this being a goal and a stated commitment to something that is delivered? And it's great to be able to point to this as one of several examples. So I thank you for your consideration. I thank you for the investment in this year from ARPA dollars, and ask that you would consider the funding as it touches on each of these districts, whether through markets that are hosted there or through funding that will reach farmers, especially in districts five and four. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Carlos?
Hello, my name is Carlos Montes. I'm an organizer with the American Civil Liberties Union of Northern California, so I work out of the Sacramento office, and I'm also a resident of Patrick Kennedy. So thank you for this opportunity to speak before all of you. I want to echo what Marshall was saying earlier. As an organizer, I'm usually the link between community members and our staff members. I deal exclusively in people and community, on issues that affect our community, and this being one of those issues that affect our community, you know, we just want to speak, we want to reiterate the great impact that NorCal Resist has had on our community members. You know, while working with Marshall, we were able to go through and meet some folks, you know, that NorCal Resist has worked with, and they've provided some public comments to us, you know, and in one of the testimonies, I want to talk about, excuse me, Dolores Cortez, who made a very brief statement, but I think it's important because sometimes we think of, we think of like immediate communities, and we tend to overlook some communities who are marginalized in different ways. But for example, they mentioned that the services at NorCal Resist were very offered, were very informative, helpful for people and for immigrants. It's important to have the car on point not to get pulled over. And I chose this one specifically because sometimes we overlook some of those community members who are most vulnerable, our immigrant communities, for example, who deal with other issues other than just, you know, the car lights. But I think that's important because, you know, we're reaching, well, all of our community members, and we're essentially saying they're not invisible. But, you know, this is just one of hundreds of people who benefited from these services. I do want to reiterate that, you know, as of July 2024, NorCal Resist has serviced over 154 vehicles for free, and those numbers are increasing due to an increase in the number of events that they're hosting to repairs a month and a growing public knowledge of their services. And we just hope that with county funding, NorCal Resist could serve more residents and will continue to help reduce racial disparities and traffic stops and alleviate harms to our community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Include your public comments.
Okay, that's all the public comment we have. Mr. Villanueva?
Thank you, Supervisor. You've already had a first and a second put on to increase it, increase the budget by $62,500. I just wanted to hang a little more detail off of that for our records. So this would increase the Human Assistance Administration budget for, by $62,500 for the CalFresh benefits at the Florin market, Florin Farmers Market. This would also reduce our appropriation to our contingency for the adopted budgets. We'll take it to a new balance of $14,492,295. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I know that we're just about to vote on the item, but before we do and before we then adjourn into the rest of our day, I wanted to acknowledge, and I don't know, Mr. Chisholm, if you got up and suggested that the activities outside be tamped down so that we could conduct business in here, but if that's the case, it did not go unnoticed, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of the folks that are hung out and stayed in the room here. Thank you.
Supervisor Cerna, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Then we do have a motion and a second. We have exhausted public comment, so roll call vote, please.
Yes, Cerna?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Great work, staff. Thank you, Supervisor. Okay. That takes us to our next item, which we will continue before we get to county executive comments. Do we have more public comments for items not on the agenda?
We do have more public comments, and our first, so we have 37 signed up, and our first speaker is John Hershey.
Okay, you have up to two minutes each. Are we not running the list for some reason, Flo?
Yeah, do you see it?
Oh, maybe I just need to punch the wrong one. Okay. There we go, thank you.
You got it? Okay, you're welcome.
How do you do there? I originally wrote good morning, but good afternoon, actually.
It's morning.
Oh, thank you, watch that. Anyway, so my name is John Hershey, and I'm speaking on behalf of the United Association of Plumbers and Pipefitters Local 447, which is based here in Sacramento County. And I'm also a member of the Labor Community Advisory Team and the Community Relations Council, which has been put together by our DA, Ten Ho, and helped immensely by the attorneys that serve under him. These folks represented by the Sacramento County Attorneys Association are indispensable when governance and public safety are considered. At a fundamental level, public defenders do the hard work that ensure a person's right to a fair trial. And on the other side, and why I'm here, is because those at the DA's office have helped to provide training to our local building trades to ensure that bad actors in our local economy are prosecuted for similar civil or criminal violations of labor codes and safety regulations, should it be appropriate. Additionally, the DA's office, with the dedication of overworked county attorneys, helped to put an end to break-ins, theft, and vandalism of our training center. To serve the public in this capacity and also to make sure that all people have access to legal defense justifies their modest demand for an increase in pay to stave off attrition due to high workloads for jurisdictions with less work and higher pay. The desire of county attorneys to stay in public service and not take a more mercenary path with their skill sets and potentially morally dubious but lucrative work environments is a testament to their commitment to the public. We in the labor community wholeheartedly agree that these public servants deserve a raise for the vital work they do in the county in Sacramento. And on behalf of UA Local 447, we strongly endorse the raises that the SEAA is asking for, and the county should consider this an investment in their core services. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just remind, I see that, looking ahead on the list, I see some familiar names from this morning. This is items not on the agenda, and each speaker has one opportunity to speak on an item not on the agenda. So if you spoke this morning, you have exhausted your speaking on items not on the agenda. So, next.
Chair Kennedy, Matt Chisholm on behalf of the association. I have some people to advance to fill those spots that got duplicated, so if you'll...
I'm sorry, come to the podium, Matt.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Were you unable to hear me?
Yeah, I just didn't understand you.
There were some duplicates.
Yeah.
And I apologize for that. Obviously, they're not seeking to speak twice.
Okay.
But I have replacements to advance.
That's fine, that's fine. As long as they haven't spoken before, that's fine.
Of course.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Franco Garcia. Mr. Garcia, are you here? We can move to the next. It's Nick Severin.
And who's going to take Nick's place?
This is one of the replacements. It's Justin Raythiel is going to step forward. Thank you.
Chair Kennedy, supervisors, thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I'm a small business owner out in Folsom. I also serve on a county planning commission, and our businesses are struggling with crime, especially repeat offenses. We see these changes in project design and also the feedback during public comments at that planning commission. We recently reviewed a project requesting electrical fencing, and the commissioners were actually very supportive of allowing this into our commercial zones due to our businesses not really being able to defend themselves. So I'm just here today to urge you to come to a resolution quickly and get our district attorneys back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Frank, he was here earlier.
The honor at this, or at the time we'd like to have.
You, you may approach.
Thank you. Bill Romanelli is here to speak.
Okay.
Chair Kennedy, Vice Chair, supervisors, thanks very much for this opportunity. My name is Bill Romanelli. I'm a resident and business owner in Folsom, California, where I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and also on the City of Folsom Planning Commission. And while I certainly appreciate and support anything you're going to hear about the benefits to employers, their employees, and their customers of the business community, of how they benefit from a healthy and functioning justice system, I think you know that, quite frankly, and so my reason for being here today is much more personal. When an elderly member of my family was attacked in her home by a 40-year-old man, it was your district attorney's office that brought justice to us. And when I say attacked, I need you to understand that she was beaten with a baton, she was kidnapped and taken to a bank where she had to use her ATM card to take money out, brought back home, tied up, forced to drink alcohol until she passed out, and while she was unconscious, he robbed her and took everything he could carry, took her car, and left. She suffered a cardiac event as a result of it, but she survived and went on to testify against her attacker in court. During that entire process, your DA's team, led by Matt Chisholm, returned every single phone call, kept us surprised on the case with as much detail as they could, and went above and beyond to provide a level of comfort and security to us and our family at what was arguably the worst moment of our lives. And I also have to tell you that, you know, he protected the defendant's rights too. In effect, he had to do two jobs. He had to do his own, and he had to do the public defender's job to make sure that if he attained a conviction, that it could not be overturned on appeal because the defendant would claim he had inadequate representation. Every detail was dealt with, every i was dotted, every t was crossed, and we got that conviction, and they put that son of a bitch in jail for the rest of his life. So now when I hear that the DA's office is losing people of that kind of professionalism and experience because they're taking jobs in other counties to make more money, it's terrifying to me. And to think that the same agency that brought the Golden State Killer to justice is being treated by the county as a mere commodity, it's just an outrage.
Can you wrap up?
As a business owner and a taxpayer and a resident of this county, I want the best lawyers in the land representing our community and prosecuting justice. So please, do right by them, because if you do that, you're doing right by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now pinch hitting for Dustin Smith?
He has already spoken. And David Williams, I'm asking to be moved to the back of the queue, and move to Mark Slaughter, please.
Morning.
I'm Mark Slaughter. I work with the Public Defender's Office, but I've worked in public service for 47 years. I'm going back to age 14, but it's a lifelong commitment. And all of my colleagues and comrades also have that same commitment. When you look at the demographics for public service county employees, that's district attorneys and public defenders, we are 5% of the entire population in California. 5% choose this career. In Sacramento, that percentage is even lower, it's 3.3%. I bring that out to you to show that the pool of available people who are built for this job, who love this job and are committed to this job are few. We have doctorates. We went through the rigors of edg- We went through the rigors of education and finances to get our Juris Doctorate degrees past the bar. And we chose this profession because we have that as a compassion. That's who we are. We also represent the values of this county. Pride, principled, respect, innovation, diversity and inclusion, and excellence. And we represent those values each and every day in everything that we do. We ask for those same principles to be given to us when we negotiate. We ask that our executives do the same and value those core values for us in our negotiations. This is not something that every attorney is built for. This is unique, and the pool is low. Give us our raises.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Kristen Anderson, and I have been a deputy district attorney in this county over the last 17 years. And I have loved every minute of my job. My sister, Casey, is also a deputy district attorney at our office. And she has served this county for over 20 years. We are both currently assigned to the homicide unit. We are both mothers. And between the two of us, we have 37 years of experience working in this county and for our office. We have five children under the age of 16, all girls. Let me tell you, mom guilt in this profession and in this job is a real thing. The support of our family is crucial. My family is here today supporting me. And we could not do this job without their support and unwavering sacrifices that they also contribute in making sure that we're successful in this job. District attorneys seldom celebrate victories. When I get justice in the courtroom for my victims, all I feel is relief. Because we know that the pain for our victims doesn't go away when justice is served. The scars of the worst days of their lives continue. No amount of money will ever erase the pain we share with our victim families. Now, I have been given the privilege and also the burden of being one of the two prosecutors on the K Street case, where six people were murdered and 12 other people were shot. I'm sure the board is very aware of that case and the damage that that did to our community. Luckily, I get to do that case with another skilled prosecutor who has over 16 years of experience. Because what the two of us bring to that case is experience. And what is happening in not only our office, but the PD's office, is that the experience is walking out the door. 40% of our office is now attorneys with zero to five years of experience.
Can you wrap up, Kristen?
I will.
Thank you.
Who will be left to try those cases in the future? Who will be left to try the next K Street case? If the board will just bear with me for one more minute, I appreciate it.
How about 30 seconds?
Okay.
Okay.
I wear the coordinates of my office on my wrist every day to remember why I do this job and why the sacrifices are worth it. I chose this career because I love it. And I guarantee all of the people sitting in this office feel the way I do. There is no price you can put on the sacrifices that we give every day to this job in this county. And we will continue to do that. But we need the strike to end today. We need and want to go back to work. I have victims that are counting on us and on myself. And we need the board to pay us fairly. Why aren't those sacrifices that we've made enough?
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you.
Fair pay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Megan Cunningham. I have been a public defender here for over 20 years. I was born and raised in Sacramento. Now I live here. I vote here. I am raising my two little boys here. I love being a public defender. It is truly a privilege to get to protect my clients' rights, to get to tell their stories. The Public Defender's Office trains amazing attorneys. We put so much time and so many resources into honing the skills of these amazing professionals. But what's happening right now is that we are training them for other counties and other agencies because they're walking out the door. Those are all of our resources, walking out the door. Our work is very, very difficult, as you've heard from many other people. We work very long hours. On the public defense side, our clients have suffered terrible traumas. Their families have suffered terrible traumas, both in the cases oftentimes and just in life. And in order to represent them, we end up absorbing some of that trauma. We try not to, but we bring that home to our families. We are deeply committed to service. We care deeply for our clients. But when other counties, lots of other counties, are willing to pay more for the same important work, many attorneys walk out the door. They owe it to their families to take those opportunities. Our county is bleeding experienced attorneys. They are simply leaving in numbers that we haven't seen in a long time. A low vacancy rate means nothing when our attorneys are young and inexperienced. Please, put us back in those courtrooms. Keep experience here in Sacramento. Pay us competitive wages and give us binding arbitration.
Thank you, Megan.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Leland Washington, and I've been a DA for 23 years. And I'm here to talk about the sacrifices that we have been asked to make. I'm here to talk about the things that aren't in our job description. 15 years ago, I had to move my family out of a home that we loved because I received death threats from a gang I was prosecuting that took some offense to the success that I was having. My family had to move because of this. Eight years ago, my doctor, my physician, told me that I was in such poor health from the stress of my job that I was going to die by the age of 50 from a stroke or from a heart attack if I didn't make some serious lifestyle changes. His advice to me, Leland, find a new profession because this one's killing you. I've had the experiences in the courtroom trying to hold up the mother of Najah Dupree, a 15-year-old who was murdered, inconsolable in the courtroom, broken to pieces over the morning the death of her daughter. I can still hear her voice. I can still feel her pain. And in the same courtroom, I can still hear the pain of the mother of the defendant, who was just as broken, knowing that her son was going to spend the rest of his life in prison for a mistake that he could never take back. I carry that with me. But I'm not special. We all do. Everyone here with a white T-shirt carries that with them. It's part of the job. I wish I could say we could leave it in the courtroom, but it doesn't work that way. That trauma comes back with us to the office. It goes with us when we drive home. It's in the car with us. When we sit down for dinner that night at a table with our family, it's there. It's not like a hard day's worth of work where sweat and dirt can be washed off and you could come clean. You have no choice but to take that pain and that trauma, to take that sacrifice, and we bury it. And then we come back to work the next day and we do it again. We come back the next month, we do it again, year after year, decade after decade. We all come back and do it again because we gave our oath that we would do this for this community. What is that sacrifice worth? What does it mean? You can't put a dollar value on it, but it feels like your negotiator has.
Please wrap up.
And the value you've put is zero. I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Public defenders, district attorneys, two sides of the same coin of justice, but we share the same core value. We do the right things for our clients. We do the right things for this community, for public safety. I'm asking you humbly, please do the right thing for this community. End this strike.
Thank you. Ray Thomas?
Yes. Hello. I've been a public defender here for 11 years now. And, you know, I've devoted a quarter of my life to Sacramento County. And I've done so willingly, and I've had a great opportunity. And so I was disheartened by the counteroffer that we received last week. And, you know, I want to highlight that the public defender serves an important role to this community. It's a foundational role here of ensuring that when somebody is charged with a crime, that they receive a fair trial. We reach out to the community. I have been teaching at McGeorge University. I volunteered for the Florence High Program. I've teach at, it was at Rialenda as well. And so these are all parts of our jobs that we do in the community outreach. And, you know, one of the things I want to remind this council is that in 2020, when the pandemic happened, we didn't know what was going on, you know? Everyone was panicked. Everyone was locked down. It was the public defenders that went into the tanks. It was the public defenders that went out there on the front line. And they were speaking to all those indigent clients, the people that were most vulnerable, most vulnerable to the disease as well. And, you know, we put ourselves at risk for this county. And, you know, we deserve better than what we got last week. And I'm here today just to reinforce that, you know, we want to be here. My hope is that I could be here another 11 years. But there has to be good faith from the county. And so, you know, I hope that you will take everything that everyone has said here. You'll take it to heart and that you'll come back to the negotiating table. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jesse Salsedo, and I've been a DA for over a decade. That's my gray hair can tell you. Now, every year, our office hires about 10 to 12 attorneys as a class to fill the vacancies. My class was also a class of about 12 attorneys. I can tell you how many of those members of my class are left. It's me. Every single one left to get a better job for more pay. But as you've heard from other speakers, this is not about salaries. It's not about paychecks. This is about public safety and justice. And if you won't listen to the victims, if you won't listen to me, at least at a minimum, you'll listen to yourselves. Mr. Rich Desmond, on October 8, 2020, you told the Carmichael Times, "When it comes to public safety, none of us should settle for 'good enough.'" And then you continue to say that, "You continue your career-long ambition to achieve safety, justice, and fairness for everyone." Why not now? Mr. Phil Serna, your own biography provides that you are focused on public safety and that you are, quote, "working to actively retain and attract new business and jobs." Why not now? Mr. Patrick Kennedy, you have stated that you are a supporter of unionized labor. You even called it "the foundation of America's middle class." You've also said, "Listening to the community is the most important part of serving the community." Why not now? Mr. Pat Hume, from running for your current position, you have said, quote, "You stand up for crime victims and ensure safety for our families," and that your top priority is keeping our neighborhoods safe from crime. Why not now? And Ms. Sue Frost, about a year ago, you told your supporters in an email, "You will never stop speaking truth to power or advocating for the values that you hold dear." Of those values, you stated, quote, "You are a strong voice for public safety, fiscal responsibility, economic opportunity, and individual rights, and that residents have a supervisor who will listen and fight for them." Why not now?
Good morning. My name is Cecilia Zerde Herrera. I've been an assistant public defender here in Sacramento County now for about two years. And that was a lateral hire from Los Angeles County. My wife and I relocated to Mr. Kennedy's district. It's a place that we are happy to call home and hope to call home for a very long time. I went to law school with one goal, to be a public defender. And currently, I represent those that I consider to be of the highest priority: children charged with crimes. And it hurts me to be standing here, speaking to you all, instead of being in the courtroom advocating for the youth that I represent. I'm sure many of my colleagues feel the same. I am a daughter of immigrants and have heard countless stories of their labor being exploited. And I am proud to be a union member now and never imagined that I would be working in a county that negotiates in bad faith and leave us out of contract for the entire time that I've been employed here in Sacramento County. Some of my colleagues and I were the first in our families to become attorneys and do not come from generational wealth. Our job is not glamorous, and we certainly didn't choose it to become rich. We do it because we believe in the mission. We work through lunches, spend late hours in the jail, speaking to our clients, and dedicate weekends to prepping trials. This is exactly why we deserve for the pay that we've been asking for. As Mr. Serna has stated about his position, I, too, would consider my position to be an all-time status. Just as the board did for themselves, we need competitive compensation to aid in hiring and retaining attorneys that are more reflective of the communities that we represent. Give us a fair and just offer so that we can return to our clients and the courtroom.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Rebecca Dulaney. I'm an attorney with the Public Defender's Office. I'm very passionate about the work that I do, and I want to tell you a little bit about why. I grew up in a single-parent household in a low-income, black and brown neighborhood. I seen firsthand my community being policed, being criminalized at extremely high rates. It was so common to have our schools, our community events swarmed with law enforcement. And it was so common to have frequent contact. So common, it was normalized. Criminalizing a particular community based on their socioeconomic status is not normal. And although I'm a new attorney, I've dedicated my life to get here and to be able to challenge the injustices where injustice is normalized. I intend to maintain that dedication, and I would love to do so here in Sacramento County. But I cannot do that without the support and mentorship of our amazing senior attorneys. As you know, we are losing our senior attorneys day by day because you all have asked us to normalize your bad-faith negotiations. Our clients, who are saddled with debt, trauma, lifelong collateral consequences, not only deserve dedicated and passionate attorneys, but well-experienced and well-trained attorneys alongside them. The fact finders have already determined what we deserve. And these processes are in place for a reason. We will not normalize bad-faith negotiations. And we ask that you do the only appropriate decision, which is to pay us equitably. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Adrianne McMillan. I have been a deputy district attorney here in Sacramento for nine years. And in my time here, I have completed 38 jury trials. I currently run our organized retail theft unit as the vertical prosecutor. And prior to this unit, for about three years, I prosecuted serious and violent offenders in the major crimes unit. The experience I have been able to gain here in Sacramento has been invaluable. I love this community. I never actually saw myself being in Sacramento, let alone staying here for nine years. I'm not from here. I'm from the... I'm not from here, I'm from the Bay Area. I went to college on the East Coast, Howard University in Washington, DC. I went to law school at the University of San Francisco. I have been fortunate to be able to gain legal experience from other great counties. I interned at the Baltimore Public Defender's Office, the Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office, and I clerked for a judge in San Francisco County. With the background and the experience that I have, I could be elsewhere. I choose to be here. I did my two all-summer internship here, and I fell in love with being a public servant for this county. It is so disheartening to pour so much into this profession nearing a decade and have the county that you represent, the county that you fight for, the county that you lose sleep for, the county that you moved your entire life for, treat you unfairly, and tell you, your DA and public defender colleagues, that you are not deserving of fair and equitable pay. If the county continues to treat its public servants as though we are not deserving of equitable and fair treatment, the experience will continue to leave. And the bright-eyed, fresh-out-of-law-school lawyers, they will see how you treat your public servants, and they won't even apply. You shouldn't let it get to that. The time to treat us fairly was two years ago. You have a chance to remedy us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ricky Walter, not Waters. And I've been a public defender for a short seven months. So I grew up in a low-income neighborhood in Merced, California. Because of this, my first experience with the criminal justice system wasn't through a case I read in law school, but through my lived experience, watching friends and family being chewed up and spit out by courtroom after courtroom and attorney after attorney. So this work is different for me. I know what it's like to be in an audience, listening to lawyers and judges speak in a type of English that is unrecognizable. When someone you love is fighting a case, it brings a type of anxiety and dread that is unexplainable. It keeps you up at night, and it permeates every single thing that you do. And for me, it drove me to want to become a public defender. I love my job. I love helping people through their darkest and most vulnerable times. I love explaining and reexplaining court procedures to clients and their families over and over again. And because I love it, I put my all into it. We have no days off. I'm talking to clients every single day at all types of hours, literally even in my sleep. I often have nightmares about things going wrong in court and dreams about wins. And although some people will say this is unhealthy, I'm glad that my work affects me this much. Because however much it affects me, it affects my clients seven million times more. And they deserve someone who will go hard for them, worry for them, and dream for them. And us attorneys all deserve our pay to reflect how dedicated we are to our respective positions. I'm just starting what will be a very long and successful career as a public defender. I have no significant ties to any area. I love Sacramento and my office, but I want to buy a home, start a family, pay off my student loans, and be able to retire comfortably. And these are all things that I deserve to be able to do after how hard I worked to get here. I can't do any of that on the unfair wages that we've been offered. So like everyone else has said, please give us the bare minimum market value that we deserve, so we don't have to keep leaving to other counties that will appreciate our work more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning to the board. My name is Audrey Keon. I've been a full public defender for four years, but for three years before that, I was a volunteer. So the minute I got certified to speak in court as a law student, I applied for an internship here, in this building, in 700H. I would get out of class, I would drive down the freeway, and I would go through the doors that are right downstairs to start handling cases, working up motions, talking to clients. So from 2L until this point, this job has been my entire life. And those who work with me will know that I'm not exaggerating. My first day as a paid attorney was in March 2020. In fact, the very day that the first of the COVID lockdowns came. So my law school classmates all moved back in with their families and picked up lockdown hobbies and started learning how to make sourdough. But the people who are here with me in this office spent the day surrounded by files, trying to figure out how to make sure our clients didn't get thrown under the bus when the world went crazy. I don't want to be on strike. If this were just about putting food on my own table, I wouldn't be here. None of us do this work to get rich, and you'll hear so many of us say that in front of you. But it's not just about me alone. Our job is not meant to be done alone by brand-new attorneys who are inexperienced, fresh-out-of-law school, who will make mistakes if there aren't people there to help them and to train them. I wouldn't have survived until this point if there weren't mentors and coworkers in my office who would make sure that I didn't take my learning curve out on my clients' rights and freedoms, when so much of the world and so much of the justice system is already turned against them. And right now, those mentors and those coworkers who helped me, those are the people who are leaving. The person who helped me through my first pitchers motion just gave her notice last month. I'm tired of losing coworkers. I'm tired of losing mentors. I'm tired of losing friends, of getting yet another farewell email, you know, another round of fresh files on my desk because we've got to distribute the caseload. Only one of my original hiring classes still with me. Over half of the hiring classes before and after me are already gone. So I'm asking you, as the county board, and yes, I will wrap up, to tell Labor to negotiate with us, to stop trying to take away my retirement, to give us the fair contract we deserve to do this work. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have David Williams.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing today?
Good.
My name is David Williams, Jr., and my mother was murdered by her husband in 2014 here in Sacramento. The case was complex, and in that was a not guilty by reason of insanity defense, including claims of mental psychosis. My family is very big, very close, and I attended all the court proceedings both times the case was tried. Matt Chisholm was our DA, and he was always available to explain legal issues, give us confidence and comfort to my family through the difficult time. Matt obtained a verdict of first-degree murder, and my mom's husband was sentenced to life. The conviction was then reversed on appeal and reopened all the wounds for my family. Matt was there again. He comforted my family and gave us confidence. He tried my mom's killer again in 2019 and even did the closing arguments on his birthday. Again, he was convicted of first-degree murder and sentenced to life in prison. You can see in court, in our meetings, how much Matt cared and cared about us and the case. In the meetings, he showed my family autopsy photos and in-car cameras showing my mom's dying words. I'm a social worker for CPS, so I understand taking home trauma and need more pay. It weighs on them, and that should be clear to the county. For some members of my family, Matt became a hero. My sister respected him so much, he had a portrait drawn of him. This is it. Matt was so ethical, though, but he wouldn't take it. I know the DAs are paid a lot compared to other jobs, but they earn every bit of it. Heroes deserve to get paid more than average. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Williams?
That was David Williams.
Okay.
In place of Mr. Wise, we have Joe Ramirez from the Public Defender.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Ramirez. I've been with the county for over 20 years. Since I've started here, I've lost virtually all of my contemporaries. My best friends are with numerous other counties. They, to this day, invite me to come work with them. They're getting more pay. They're not just getting more pay, though, they're getting more vacation to start out with. They get personal days off. They get all kinds of little perks that we don't get. But you know what else they get? They get more sleep than we do, because in this county, we try cases. These district attorneys and these public defenders here are in that courtroom five days a week, working their tails out. And yes, when we go home at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00, it doesn't matter what time we go home, even if we leave early for our day because we have an appointment, this job does not end. You sleep with it, you wake up with it, and unfortunately, sometimes, in my years I've been working here, I've even barked at my own children from lack of sleep. When you go on vacation, yes, you're not here, but you know that you've got a pile of cases and work waiting for you when you return. There is a joke at the Kings Games, cow bows, right? It's a cow town. Maybe that was once what it was, many years ago. But that's not what Sacramento is anymore. You're an urban, modernized, beautiful county. We are the state capital of the fifth-largest economy in the entire world. Where does it say that our public servants should be treated like some rural county with no money? This is the state capital of California, the state of innovation. We are the state, the paragon of the country. Let us treat our professionals like the paragons we strive to be. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jennifer Gong, and I've been a deputy district attorney here in Sacramento for six years, going on seven years now. I was born and raised in the Sacramento area. My dad was a career prosecutor, and he retired from the Placer County District Attorney's Office as chief deputy when I was in high school. I came to the Sacramento DA's office right after law school, and I chose this office over several others. I chose to be a prosecutor over less-stressful careers, and I chose to raise my family here in Sacramento, because this is home. Outside of work, I am a mom to two twin toddlers. They are 18 months old. And since they have been born, I have done six felony jury trials. I'm currently in the domestic violence unit as a trial attorney, and I was in the middle of a domestic violence attempted murder trial when this strike started. I love my job. I truly do. I love working for victims. I love being in the courtroom, and I love doing my part to make Sacramento a little bit safer. But you should know that this job does not come without its sacrifices. This is not a nine-to-five. I think about my cases all the time. I think about them on the weekends, after hours. I think about them in the middle of dinner with my husband. And when I am in trial, I barely see my kids. For the past two weeks, I have seen my kids for less than 30 minutes in the morning, less than an hour at night. I work after they go to sleep, and I wake up early at 4:00 AM to work before they wake up. And this is a normal schedule for a trial attorney, for district attorneys and public defenders, both of us. This is normal. And we oftentimes don't make it home before our kids go to sleep. But we make these sacrifices because we love what we do and we care about what we do. We work every day to make Sacramento safer, and we feel like we're being taken advantage of in return. We are asking for fair pay, because that is what we deserve. Thank you.
Spelled my name wrong again. All right. So my name is Megan Gannon. I have been with the Sacramento County now for going on 22 years. I'm currently a principal attorney in the Public Defender's Office. I supervise misdemeanor intake, and I live in Folsom, so I'm under Miss Frost jurisdiction. My unit right now is misdemeanor intake. Of the eight attorneys, seven of them have less than a year of experience. Two of them spoke today, and lovely, I might add, Rebecca and Ricky. But we do meetings every Friday. And one of the main things I try to impart on them is that you have to be professional. Your reputation matters. What you say matters. The judge, the DAs, our clients, everyone needs to believe what you say, and that reputation means something. This is a small community, and if you lose it, it's gone. Your words matter. And county labor, Matt Conley, whoever's putting out those PR releases, is lying. They're lying. When they say there's no retention problem in our county, one, they're calling Tin Ho and Amanda Lyer through the fact-finding session, and I will say Ashley Chang, Eric McBurney, Eliza Hook, Samantha Ting, and Asamari Ali all quit since I spoke to you five weeks ago. We lost five attorneys in five weeks that had a combined experience of over 25 years. And the only comeback the county has is, oh, they make too much money. They make too much money. We don't get paid overtime. Go look at Transparent California. Those sheriffs, they make money because they get paid for their time, unlike us. We have law degrees. These attorneys sitting up here owe hundreds of thousands of dollars for law school. Not all of us get to make $450,000 with a bachelor degree from Sac State. Some of us put in the time, the effort, and the money to get the education we have so we can fulfill our duties as attorneys, so we can come in here and we can work hard for you guys, for this county that we love, for this whole community that we want to be better for it. And you should stop lying and read the report and do what's right.
Now, good afternoon. My name is John Buckholz, and I'm an attorney with the Public Defender's Office. I've been here for 17 years. Public defenders and district attorneys, we disagree a lot. We argue a lot. We see the world through different lenses. We're supposed to. It's what the system demands of us. Despite all of our disagreements, there is one fundamental mutual understanding that we all have, and that is that when we disagree, we are able to ask a neutral impartial judge or jury to decide the issue. We both respect that. We honor it, and we abide by it. It's in our DNA to abide by the ruling or verdict of the neutral party. So when there was a disagreement here, we expected that a neutral impartial arbitration would help settle the disagreement. Sadly, it didn't. You've simply disregarded it and given it zero respect or deference. 300 of us honor and respect the findings of a neutral party, which is why it is so disheartening to see you not just disregard the recommendations of the arbitration, but also disregard the testimonies of two of your department heads. In my 16- or 17-year career here, I've never felt more disrespected and undervalued than I do now. And it's because of two words: perverse incentive. The arbitration panel found that Sacramento County had a perverse incentive in negotiating the way it did. I will never forget those words for as long as I am in this county. Your Labor Department treated us perversely, were called out by the arbitrator, and no one seems to care. The question I struggle with from here is, if this county doesn't care about neutrality and impartiality, why should we? Why even have arbitration if you're going to ignore the findings? Instead of arbitration, I would just assume strike, early and often. Or you can actually show the 300 attorneys that you purportedly value that arbitration means something to you, that you actually honor neutrality and impartiality. If you continue to ignore it, it is insulting to all of us who believe that using a neutral forum is critical to the pursuit of justice and the protection of individual rights.
Good morning.
Morning.
Afternoon.
My name is Shelley Lazaretto, and I've been with the DA's office for nearly 18 years. For 13 of those years, I handled trials in the child abuse, adult sexual assault, gangs, and homicide units. Like others, I have absorbed secondary trauma. I watched a 10-year-old boy break down on the stand as he described the sexual abuse that he endured. He was sobbing so hard that the judge had us take a break, and I went to the bathroom, and I cried. But I had to do it quickly because I had to get back in the courtroom and present with composure. I am lucky enough now to supervise three lead attorneys and seven young trial deputies. My leads and I pour ourselves into those younger attorneys with time, energy, education, and emotional support. It would be a tragedy and a waste of taxpayer money if even one of those young people left our county for a different county. our county for a different county. Last week, I was driving into the strike one day, and I thought, I just want to go to work. You have 300 bright, determined attorneys here that chose to be public servants, that want to work for you and every member of this community. But we need the tools to do that, and one of those tools is a salary that is competitive with comparable markets so that we can attract and retain effective attorneys. That is all we're asking from you, are the tools to do our jobs and do them well. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Gomez. I've been working for the Public Defender's Office for 20 years. I'm also the vice president of the union. Just by way of background, I don't come from, I don't have generational wealth. Neither of my parents graduated from college. I was the first one in my family to graduate from college. I was the first one to go to grad school. I was the first one to go to law school. When I graduated from NYU in 2003, the starting salary for my classmates was $125,000. They all went to Wall Street and to the Wall Street firms, and they made $125,000 a year. I took this job at the time that made $54,000 a year, and I was $163,000 in debt, all but 20 of it from law school. My, the young, the young attorneys that I helped supervise in the prelim unit, some of them are $200,000, $300,000 in debt. So when people talk about us making a lot of money, that has to be factored in. The reason why I chose to be a public defender, I chose the $54,000 a year job rather than the $125,000 a year job, it's because I wanted to serve the poor. I thought, you know, poor people deserve a good attorney, not just the wealthy, not just Cisco or Elon Musk and the big, and the, you know, the SP 500 corporations, the average Joe on the street. And I've very much enjoyed having this job, but I will tell you, it's a very difficult job. I have seen my colleagues crying when they've gotten a bad result. I have seen people kick themselves in the behind over a bad result. I have seen people be very shook up from a bad result. I can tell you the, the stress of being in trial is very difficult. I have a difficulty sleeping while I'm in trial. So I do expect a little bit more from the county. You are my public service employer. You are not out to maximize your advantage over us. You are not out to maximize profit. You are there to give service to the community. So I know my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of this board. I'm a pro-public defender. I came to this country from Vietnam through a refugee resettlement program in 1990 because my father was a prisoner of war for 10 years. I grew up in San Ana in a predominantly poor black and brown community. My father was a janitor for public schools and worked long, hard hours, delaying his retirement until 75 so he could support me through college and law school. After law school, I took on tremendous debt and gave up more lucrative opportunities because I believed in public service and defending the due process rights my father did not get under the Yoko communism. And I wanted to defend people from the communities like the one I grew up in. Now, some members of this, as some members of this board know, I'm a new father to a beautiful baby girl. This job takes time away from her, just as it takes time away from all the husbands and wives, mothers and fathers, sons and daughters who stand behind me, here and outside. And when we're with them, we bear the burden of the intense trauma that we take on from our jobs. We give our time to this county and to this community, sacrificing the precious moments with our families, and we do this because we are dedicated, and all we ask for in return is fairness. But that dedication is being tested. All around me, my friends and colleagues are leaving. They're leaving because Sacramento County refuses to listen to us, to our department heads, and to the clear evidence that wages are no longer competitive for the amount of work we do. We're facing a recruitment and retention crisis, not because we don't believe in the work, but because the county's unwillingness to act is pushing dedicated public servants away. Just these last two weeks, we have lost four senior attorneys in our office. The county's position is a slap in the face to those of us who stay. It tells us that our commitment to serving our communities is undervalued. Now, we don't ask to be the highest paid, just to be valued fairly and treated with respect for the work we do. So please listen to us, not just as public defenders or district attorneys, but as people, as your community members, members committed to serving the public, and take action that will allow us to continue doing so. Thank you.
Members, please stay seated after I finish our speaking and remain for the rest of the speakers and the rest of the session, please.
My name is Matt Chisholm. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a deputy district attorney. I've been one for 19 years. I'm also the president of the union. I've been in the homicide unit for the last seven years. There are a lot of important people that spoke today, and there's a lot of really intelligent, important people outside with kazoo's right now. And that seems like a joke, but it's true frustration on my part. We're here because my union has never received a good faith offer from county labor. Our community leaders should be solving the great problems that face our community, not ignoring a report from a neutral. Our public attorneys should be in courtrooms, fighting for justice on both sides, and guiding all of the participants, the victims, the defendants, the witnesses, and the jurors through this process. Instead, we are all here. Last Friday, I emailed you regarding the only offer I've ever received. It was a net-zero offer. It was insulting. It was insulting because it ignores the arbitration process that we all, including the county, participated in. I put you all on notice about this offensive offer, and yet no one from the county has contacted me since. I have great respect for the members of this board, but that's a failure. You know county labor is not negotiating. You think my members will lie down. And your community mobilized today to deliver this message to you. And the county has still not delivered one good faith offer. Sacramento deserves better. You were elected for your leadership. Please take the reins and bring some integrity back to this process. Thank you.
Is Laura Alejandro here? She did speak already? Okay. Then Nola Boyer.
County Board of Supervisors, I'm just a citizen. I'm not here on, because I work at the DA's office. I moved here in 1975. I've seen a lot of changes in Sacramento, and most are not for the better. I worked in Sacramento City Unified School District and retired from there, so I know a lot about corrupt contracts and things of that nature. We too went through years of not having a contract. I read through yesterday the neutral arbiter's findings. It took some time, but I was astonished at how long this has been going on. Why? I know some of these people, and I've been working with Ten Ho, as I'm also a volunteer and a board member of Hope for Sacramento, trying to address the homeless crisis. I know about hard work, and I got to tell you, what I read yesterday about these qualified attorneys leaving in droves, and I can't blame them, but I watched the budget presentation today, and it shocked me that the administrative costs are nearly as high as the law enforcement costs. That's not okay. You got to find some ways to get your budget working and honor these people. Ten Ho and his staff are doing a fabulous job for this city, and I personally am grateful for him. And I ask you from the bottom of my heart that you honor them and give them the contract they deserve, and the number of attorneys to keep us all safe. Thank you.
Lisa Kirk, are you here? Okay. Shelley Lazaretto? Duplicate, thank you. Devin Strecker, or Stryker?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Devin Strecker. I am the executive director of the River District, as well as a resident, and I'm here to support the Sacramento County Attorneys Association. I'm also proud to represent the LGBTQ population on the District Attorney's Community Relations Council. We value our partnership with the District Attorney's Office and our public defenders, which are a crucial component of our system of public safety and justice. As a volunteer advocate with the Coalition of Concerned Legal Professionals, I also know that 95% of the nation's lawyers represent only 1% of the population. So it is imperative that we invest in and fairly compensate those who have dedicated themselves to public service for the rest of us. Thank you.
Mo Cashmere? Okay. Angela Brooks?
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Brooks. I'm an assistant public defender. I'm fairly new to this county, but I'm not new to the profession. I've been a public defender for almost 10 years, which is an important milestone because at 10 years, you become eligible to have your student loans forgiven. But I've been almost 10 years. I've tried everything from petty theft to murder to forcible rape and sodomy. And I know you don't want to hear about forcible rape and sodomy, but there are days, mornings, and nights where that's all we get to think about, the pictures we reviewed, the interviews we've sat with, the victims and the families all torn apart. I joined this profession because I felt a calling to be a voice for my community, to stand up for those who are most vulnerable, the mentally ill, the poor, and communities of color. My goal was to hold a system accountable, to speak truth as power, and to stand in the gap for those who have taken, who have had the system take everything but their dignity from them. Those goals have come at a personal cost to me. I'm a mother of three, and in this county, at just six-month postpartum, while battling postpartum depression, nursing my infant, and managing my husband's transition from active-duty military to civilian life, I had to crawl out of my bed at 4:00 in the morning to try a case, to process photos of a toddler with burns in their buttocks. I tried that case against a capable and experienced district attorney who's standing on this line, just like I am, saying nothing else but pay us fairly. I worked for years in a county that valued their justice workers. They didn't value it with their words or with thank-you emails or pizza parties. They valued it every 15th and the 30th of the month in our paychecks, with a competitive 8% deferred compensation match and generous administrative and personal leave. Longevity in this profession is possible with fair pay, but I can tell you with all sincerity and experience, the Sacramento County compensation package is inadequate. Bargain with us fairly and sign our contract.
Charles?
I want to say that I agree with everything that the DA said. His long speech was very accurate. The District Attorney's Office does the majority of the good work in law enforcement in Sacramento when it comes to actually seeing criminals go to prison, and they're one of the few places in Sacramento where you see people that are victims of crimes actually become survivors of crimes and be able to move on with their life. That is entirely just the District Attorney's Office, so I'm in support of them getting what they need.
Marshall? Eden, speak off of, eat's book on budget.
Hello. My name is Marshall Arnwijn. I work for the ACLU of Northern California. I'm the legal policy advocate for the criminal justice program. Today, we are urging the county to engage meaningfully and with urgency to resolve the labor and wage issues that have led to the current strike of the public defenders, to ensure that those who are incarcerated or facing charges receive their constitutional right to legal representation. In order to do so, there is a need for a strong public defense for those that cannot afford to pay for private counsel. The Public Defender's Office serves some of the most vulnerable people in the county's criminal legal system. 81% of the jail population is pre-trial, and most will need a public defender. If this strike continues, our most vulnerable community members will suffer the most harm without adequate or zealous representation. The ACLU's primary concern is that community members' constitutional rights are not being violated. In the past, when people's rights have been violated, the ACLU have had to initiate a lawsuit or engage in other legal advocacy to remedy the injustice. In 2015, the ACLU sued Fresno County for insufficiently funding the Fresno County Public Defender's Office. In 2023, the ACLU filed a lawsuit against Kern County for systematically denying poor misdemeanor defendants their constitutional right to counsel and due process. The right to counsel and due process are fundamental pillars of the criminal legal system, and ensuring a robustly funded public defender's office is a key component of that. We urge the county to resolve this important matter as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Miller. I'm a principal attorney with the Public Defender's Office. I've been an attorney with the office for 17 years. We've been called greedy and overpaid, and I'm talking to you, Mr. CEO. So I want to talk to you about what our job is. When we're in trial, we're in court from 8:30 to 4:30. When we're done, we go back to our office, and we spend the next hour going through voicemail and emails on the other 45 trials that we have. We go home, and if we're lucky, we get to spend two hours with our children before they go to bed. It's 8:30. We then start working on the trial for the next day. We try to go to bed by 1:00, repeat for six days. We work on weekends because while we were in trial, we were assigned more cases, new files to review, new clients to meet. We do jail visits. We watch hours and hours of body cam. We don't get paid overtime. This is not an eight-to-five job. We suffer from insomnia. We wake up in the middle of the night thinking about what we should have done on a case. We think about the 22-year-old who took a 30-to-life sentence because he trusted my advice. We think about all the times that were inadequate and wish that we could do better, and maybe if he had a better attorney, he would have gotten 15. We work while we're on vacation. I took a week off and spent a week in Bodega Bay with my family. As a trial supervisor, I was on vacation, my team was not. I answered voicemails, calls, handled emergencies every single day. I did not get paid overtime. Work doesn't stop when we have our own personal crisis. My mom died two years ago yesterday. I worked while I sat next to her bed while she was in hospice. I worked while I sat next to her bed while she was in hospice. I worked through my grief because my client's constitutional rights doesn't just stop because of my heartbreak. I did not get paid overtime. This is not an 8-to-5 job because of the secondary trauma that we take home. You, Mr. CEO, get to go home and share with your family the stress of your day. You get to talk about those greedy attorneys that are asking for more money, but we can't share what we do because no one wants to hear about the 500 images of child pornography. No one wants to hear about the CPS report from our client when he was six years old where his dad used him as an ashtray.
Can you wrap up, Lisa?
We talked about how the vacancy rate is near zero, but that is a mistruth. What happens is, the attorneys that are leaving our office are level fours and fives, and they're being replaced by ones. A level four or five is an attorney that's been with our office for nearly seven to 10 years. So it will take seven to 10 years for our office to be back to where it was before we lost that attorney.
Please wrap up.
We're asking you to pay us fairly. We're not greedy, and we're not overpaid. There's so much that we do that we don't put on our timesheets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everybody for being here in chambers. It means a lot to hear from you and appreciate your passion and dedication to Sacramento County. As you know, we up here are the guardians of the Fisk. You are the collective guardians of our system of justice, and I certainly appreciate you and respect you for the work that you do. Now, this board is not a—we don't directly negotiate, but we set the policy, and I, for one, think it needs to be the policy that we resolve this matter as soon as possible and get open back to the table. Which is what we will be discussing in a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Serna, do you have anything?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that, next item is county executive comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just—I didn't have a chance to thank the staff from the Budget Office again for all their hard work on the budget that we did, and you guys did approve it. Thank the executive team, the department heads, and the fiscal staff because they are instrumental in preparing this budget. And oddly enough, we just kicked off the budget for next year, for '25, '26, so we're already starting those discussions with them. But last but not least, I want to thank you for your leadership and your direction and everything that you've provided us to help set the policy and prepare the agenda—or prepare the budget. So thank you for your time, and we look forward to fulfilling the policies as you set forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other supervisor punched in, so I believe Supervisor Serna has a memorial.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, I'd like to have our meeting adjourned in memory of Dr. Steve Wertz, who passed away on August 4th. He had a long career as a developmental psychologist, public health research scientist, and most importantly, as an advocate for Sacramento's most marginalized communities. He brought his professional expertise and community experience to the table to improve the health and well-being of young children and families. He spent the majority of his career at the California Department of Public Health, where it was focused on statewide evaluation efforts of critical maternal and infant health programs. Steve had a long and important history as an original First Five architect, steering the vision of the commission's very first strategic plan 25 years ago. He has had a hand in nearly every strategic plan since then. I've had the honor of working with Steve as a fellow First Five commissioner for the past, actually, almost 14 years, during which time he also served as our chair of the Evaluation Committee. Additionally, Steve worked with the Child Abuse Prevention Center to create the first child death review team report, and I participated in the child death review team report 13 years ago with him that led to Sacramento County having a focus on reducing disproportionate African-American childhood deaths. His continued focus as commissioner was on First Five sustainability and systems improvement efforts that created conditions so children have equal opportunities to develop to their full potential. As chair of the First Five Commission, we are extremely grateful to Dr. Wertz for his enthusiastic contributions over the last 25 years. His passion and leadership to narrow disparities for our most vulnerable populations have made a difference, and Steve's contribution and legacy to the Sacramento community will not be forgotten. So again, Mr. Chair, I'd like us to adjourn today's Board of Supervisors meeting in memory of Dr. Steve Wertz.
Thank you, Supervisor. As the supervisor representing District 2, where Dr. Wertz lived, I was the regular recipient of very passionate, heartfelt emails. He was not short on opinions, but his heart was always in the right place and looking out for those who couldn't look out for themselves. So I thank you for your words, and with that, we will adjourn in the name of Steve Wertz. Mr. Serna?